Yes, we do.
So I think I'll get things moving and others will join in shortly, I'm sure. So welcome back, everyone. We are now meeting as a committee of the whole. And I call this meeting to order. Is there any declaration of interest from anyone? You flip my screen. Seeing none. If one does arrive, arise during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare at that time. And item three, we're dealing with delegations. Madam Clerk are our guests present?
Yes, they are. So we have Courtney and Taylor.
Excellent. So Courtney Miller with the Business Enterprise Centre and Taylor Corfield with the also with the Business Enterprise Centre. You now have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I will just share my screen with you all. Can y'all see the presentation there?
Not yet.
Oh.
There we go.
There we go. Perfect. Okay. So thank you for having us today and giving us the opportunity to chat a little bit about the Business Enterprise Centre. So we've had an interesting last year for sure, where there's a lot of adoption that we had to do as the centre, just to best assist our businesses as they are going through this, you know, difficult time. And so we run on the provincial fiscal year. So we're just completing year two of our three-year contract with the province to offer these services to our business community. So it's a good opportunity to kind of look back on the last year, look at our programming and kind of look forward to what we plan to do within the next year. So a quick look at our last year. So our centre had 445 inquiries from our small business community over the last year. So what our inquiries look like, it's normally an email or a phone call that we can normally address within about 15 minutes. Taylor does the large majority of those. And it's often, you know, kind of one or two direct questions that we can, we can address in the moment and give them the answer that they need on the spot. If during that inquiry, we find that they need a little bit more help or they need additional resources, we book with them a consultation. And that's an opportunity to meet one-on-one with myself or Taylor. And we can dig a little bit deeper into the needs of that business. So over the last year, we did 74 consultations with brand-new businesses. So those may be someone in an ideation, they might be in the first year of operation. And we did 49 with existing businesses within our communities. And we, in those consultations, we track the referrals that we give to those businesses. So something that I've probably said 100 times is I really see our centre as a connector for the small business community. My hope is that we're your first stop as a business owner and then I can give you those direct contacts that you need. Year over year, we've seen our referrals to the public sector increase. And I really have to give credit to that, to Savannah. She has put such a priority on having partnerships and connections with those other resources within our community so that we're aware of what they're offering and we can make those direct connections and we have those relationships. So when someone comes in and says, you know, I'm starting a business in Gray Highlands and I, I'd really like to speak to someone locally about what is available to me. I can make that direct connection to the active officer in that area. And then they have that resource available to them. So those public sector referrals can be anything from the different levels of government to our CFDCs, to the Ministry of Labour, we have direct connections there. So really getting them kind of like a person that they can speak to and get their needs addressed. We also last year issued 54 grants and I'll dig into that a little bit further and made 36 mentorship matches for our small business community. As you are likely aware, we have a grant program we run annually that's called Starter Company Plus. It's previously always been designed really to focus on new businesses. But when the pandemic happened, we typically run this program each spring. We struggled to open a grant program for new businesses, watching our existing businesses struggle. And at that point in time, the small business grant wasn't yet available. And we really knew that we needed to help that community specifically. So with the support of Gray County and of county council, we kind of adapted that program to really focus on our existing businesses and helping them pivot and reopen after that first lockdown. We were lucky enough to have Gray County allocate some funding to match the grants that we had available. So we were able to offer twice as many as that we would have been able to otherwise. And we were able to award each business with $2,500 to assist with their opening efforts. Part of our mandate through the province is training. So we also offered three webinars to each of those businesses and provided them with the opportunity to meet with a local mentor or advisor if they were interested. So through that program, we supported 45 businesses and there was representation from every municipality. We were able to issue over $111,000 in grant money. They each received six hours of training, very focused on recovery and business training. And we made 16 mentorship matches. So our mentorship through that program was very curated. Because we were working with the existing business community, many had mentors already. But there were a handful who said, I don't have a mentor and these are my pain points or my weak points. Could you find someone to meet with me on that? So we did kind of like this curated one-on-one matchmaking to find someone to fill those needs. And then the cover, our centre covered the cost of that session. So overall, it was a really successful program. We interacted with businesses that we hadn't interacted with before, which was wonderful, and we're able to offer them additional support. I just included a couple of quotes that we received from the businesses for a feature we did in Maiden Gray in the fall. And the one thing that I really took out of this program this year was A, the advisor support and how valuable they found that. And B was even these grants of $2,500, they may not seem like a large sum of money, but to a small business, they really can do a lot to propel them forward. So for example, Dan, who the first quote is from, he had wanted to have an online presence, but just hadn't had the additional cash flow to support building out that website. So that's what he used the grant for and he was able to adapt his business and open him up to a whole new audience. And then Rachel Kwan, who is the second quote, she was an event florist and her industry was entirely wiped out by the pandemic. So through the grant, she was able to adapt and move more to a direct consumer model and is doing really well. And she's over in the Gray Highlands area. We didn't run summer company last year. It was, it was a bit of an unsure time when we would have normally been launching it. And we didn't want to put the students in a position where we were setting them up to start businesses that might not be able to operate. But at the same time, we knew that there are so many youth entrepreneurs within Gray County. It's kind of part of our fibre. So we wanted to make sure that we were supporting them. So we developed a student maker market. And this year, we didn't offer, we offered 24 workshops and events this year, which is less than we typically offer because we knew there was a lot of fatigue in the business community. They didn't really have the capacity to take on that much more training. So what we received permission from the province was to do was to take our funding that we hadn't spent in events and workshops and move it over to support these youths. So we offered nine local youth an award of $750. We called it a micro grant to help them develop product. And then we facilitated a market for them to sell it. The large majority of markets this year were cancelled, so many opportunities to sell for these youths hadn't been provided. So we had a day-long market. It was a wonderful opportunity. We had 15 businesses in total participate, all youth-run businesses. In addition to the market, we gave them a little bit of training, small business training, just kind of on the fundamentals. And we had 200 community members come and support them at that market. It was a really kind of feel-good day. We had the ability, because of Sid and Ham, Sid and Ham thankfully, to properly distance. And you know, we were in conversation with public health and we led the market to make sure that we were adhering to all of the regulations. But overall, a really wonderful experience and a couple of those youth are coming back and going to be doing our summer company program this year. So just some info from the market. So there's just one of our participants, really cool business model. She takes all of her grandmother's preserve recipes and has developed a whole line of preserves, which she sells, really awesome products. And then a quote from Olivia, who makes pet care products. And she actually participated in our summer company in a previous year. And she's one of those true entrepreneurs. She will absolutely be an entrepreneur in her future. And one of the things that she said in an article for the local newspaper was that through this program, she not only got the startup cost, but she got the mentorship that she needed to start her business. So she has that foundation now for her, you know, life path as an entrepreneur, which is really something that we're happy to be able to provide. Another thing that was new this year and it came out of some funding that was received from the Ontario Government under the Ontario Together Fund, was funding to develop a website for all of the 54 small business centres. So this is a resource we have always wanted as small business centres, but we've never had the ability to build out. We have never had an umbrella to operate under this, like a way like a chamber would. So if someone was to come from another region to our region, they might have trouble finding our centre because we operate in a different way. We have a different name. There's no been, there's never been that kind of like easy direct connection. So this new website is a hub for all of this 54 centres throughout Ontario. It's one more way which businesses can find us, which we greatly appreciate. And there's also going to be some small business resources on there. There's some pre-recorded webinars as well that we can use as additional resources for our businesses. Through that funding, we also received $32,000 and they earmarked it as funding for virtual support advisors. And they really kind of gave us some flexibility on how each centre decided they wanted to use that. One thing the pandemic has really taught us is we need to listen to our clients and we need to build and adapt our services based on what their need is. So one thing that we were hearing and we heard out of the recovery program we offered was that mentorship and advisorship had a very important part in our community. And it was a gap currently. So what we decided is to partner with Catapult Gray Brews and offer a mentorship pilot for our small business community using that $32,000 kind of as the seed funding for it. So we are currently in the midst of running that pilot. It's running from January to September. Our goal for the pilot is to have 20 mentorship matches for businesses who are in existence and kind of at that growth or expansion stage. They run in the program for a six-month period. Again, similar to how we did it in the recovery program, it's a very curated matching with their mentor. It might not be someone in the same sector as them. It might be someone who kind of fills those pain points and has that experience to share. And throughout the six months, they meet once a month with their mentor and they're given some, you know, three tangible actions at each meeting, which they take away and bring back the next month and have completed. In addition, we're doing three virtual network and training opportunities for the program participants. One thing that we're really finding, I mean, it's always something that we hear in entrepreneurship, but I find even more in the pandemic, is that there is that need for peer-to-peer learning. They have such, it's hard right now for them to have opportunities to meet with other entrepreneurs. So we're trying to provide that opportunity to have networking events as well for those in the program. We also recently received additional funding for this program through Bruce Community Futures. So although 20 mentorship matches had been our target, we've opened up the application again and hoping to intake a few more into the program so we can support some more businesses. As with any pilot, this is a learning opportunity for myself and for Jen Christie from Catapult Gray Brews. We're doing a lot of touchpoints with both the mentors and the mentees to find out what's working, what's not working. How can we make this a better experience for everyone? And hopefully that will be used to shape a program that we can continue long-term through Catapult Gray Brews. So that's kind of our last year in review. It's been, it's been a busy year. It's been an interesting year. We've learned a lot. We had some quiet periods. Typically, the two lockdowns where everyone was kind of holding in place, I'm sure, is how to move forward. But overall, our numbers for the centre are on par with our year previous. So we've actually had more in our high period. So it's nice to see that people are coming to us during these times. We had a lot of inquiries from past clients, which is, I'm happy that they still see us as a resource when things get a little bit tough and they need to find access to grants or additional supports. They still, we're still their first stop and we have the ability to connect them with those things. So we're moving into year three of our contract with the province. It's our final year. And we have decided to run summer company and start a company in pretty traditional ways this year. So a summer company, which is our youth entrepreneurship program, for those who may not be aware, it typically runs every summer and we support six local youth through that with a $3,000 grant as well as training. We already have five of the six spots filled for the summer, so we're really excited about that. And really COVID-resilient businesses, the kids have really thought about it this year and about that there is uncertainty. We don't know in which way they're going to be able to present their businesses. So they've created models that they'll be able to move forward with, no matter, you know, what the future in the summer looks like, which is, we're really happy about. We are also on Monday beginning intake for our Starter Company Plus program. This is our program for adult entrepreneurs, those typically who are starting new business. In previous years, we have also included those who are in years one to five expansion stages. We decided this year, just because of the volume of participants we are anticipating applying, we really are just going to focus on new businesses this year. So either ideation to first year of operation, that's kind of going to be our sweet spot. And we'll be able to kind of curate our training around that for them and give them the support they need. That program typically they run in for about a six-month period between the training, business plan development and the completion of the program. And they receive grants of up to $5,000. So if you know of anyone in your communities who has recently launched a business and could use some additional support, please feel free to share that program with them. The application will be on our site as of Monday. So yeah, that's, that's, that's me. That's, that's us in a nutshell and what we've been up to over the last year. I'm more than happy to take any questions if you guys have anything about our centre and our services.
Works better when I unmute. Thank you very much, Courtney. I really appreciate that. And Taylor, I know that you're with us as well. Is there anything you wanted to add?
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Warden. No, Courtney covered pretty much everything. All I have to say is I'm looking forward to running both of our programs this year and looking forward to more of a traditional launch.
Very good. Well, thank you. You folks have been very busy and we appreciate your work. I know that Council Robinson has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And through you, I'm very excited about these programs and I see the benefit to our economy with the, with each of these programs. So congratulations. We did have an individual within our community that was most interested in the Starter Company Plus program. The, the comment or the feedback that I received was that the individual had post-secondary training and knowledge. And wondering what the advantages, and I certainly hope there are many, would be for the individual to enter into the Starter Program Plus. So it's a question for my knowledge, but it's also an opportunity to just impart that knowledge right now. So thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a lot of benefits that come out of participating in the program. One of the main ones that I find every year is that they really form a support system between the participants in the program. So we intake more into the training portion than we have available in grants because some people are happy just with the training portion. It is competitive process to receive the grant. But often that peer-to-peer piece is so important as an entrepreneur. So it's, it's having those connections. And it's interesting to see even years later, those businesses continuing to work together because those relationships have been formed. So that's, that is a key part of it for sure. The training, even when you have business experience, and I'm someone who also, I have a business degree, but I don't know how much hands-on practical experience that really gave me when it came to running a business. And we, we really try to focus on that hands-on practical knowledge that you may not have otherwise gained in our training portion. So that, that is definitely another thing. And then also, I mean, the funding itself, sometimes that $5,000 can really just be that, that, that step up you need to launch things. We get a piece of equipment that you need or if you needed to do marketing and advertising or website development, that, that amount of funding can really sometimes launch you in a way that you haven't been able to access otherwise. And I need the connections too. We're here to, to connect and support. And we have, I would say, every one of our participants, we still communicate with and have ongoing relationships with. They come back whenever they need support in their, you know, entrepreneurial journey.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't see any other hands, Madam Clerk.
No, sir.
And so if that's the case, I want to thank Courtney and Taylor very much for coming and presenting today. You did a great job, Courtney.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have Peter? Ready to go, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Peter is here and I think Kevin's going to provide an introduction.
Excellent. So Kevin, you have the floor.
Thanks, Warden, and thanks, Council. Yes, today I have Peter Frye, he's the Vice President for Corporate and Client Services with Municipal Tax Equity. Peter's been a longtime consultant, working with the county on our tax policy and someone I seek out advice from. So he's going to assist today and provide a presentation, which is, I think, will try to help with my tax policy report that's on the agenda here today. So Peter's gonna make a presentation here and share his screen. And so, welcome, Peter.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Warden and Committee. I will share my screen now. Hopefully I do that correctly. Comes up quick. Can everybody see that?
Yes, sir.
And you can hear me okay?
Perfectly.
In terms of what I'm going to talk about today, it's sort of two parts. Well, it is two parts. I'm going to talk about the 2021 tax policy in terms of those decisions you're actually going to make this year. Tax ratios and things like that. We'll cover growth. I'll start by talking a little bit about what is unique for 2021 tax year because that's important to know, what's different and what's not different. We'll look at some optional tax policy models. And then in the second part, I will stop after the first part. The overview of the new small business subclass that was announced in the provincial 2020 budget back in the fall. And I'll give you some perspective on that and the way I'm recommending municipalities think about it or potentially look at it if they are interested in going down that, that road. So 2021, it should have been the first year of a new reassessment cycle where we were going to update to a January 1st 2019 market value from, from January 1st, 2016. But the province paused that as part of the overall reaction early on to the pandemic and then the public health crisis. So we are again using the same CVAs as we did last year. In terms of the base value, what is the position in the market that we value in these homes and businesses? So we are going back to January 1st, 2016. We're going to stick to that date. Because we have been using a phase-in program, which brings in any increases in assessment over a four-year cycle since 2009, we were at the end of a cycle. So just coincidentally, we're at the end of the cycle when they, when they pause this. We're using the full CVA. So this will be actually the first year since 2008 with no market-driven valuation change. And, and it's important to know what that means and sort of what it doesn't mean. And the best way to understand that is to make sure that, that we're clear on all the different influences, particularly those external influences on our property tax landscape. If we understand what they'll do, then we understand what's missing this year. And really, we're missing just a limited element within the system, which is that phase-in and reassessment, where we are not updating market value to a more current point in time. This updates the relative value of everybody's property, but it doesn't change the size of the base or the nature of the base. We're not adding properties. We're not adding new revenue. We're just changing everybody's share of the revenue because it, it shifts my property. It came in at 100,000. It stayed there for four years. Yours went from 150 to 200. It comes in a bit more every year as we phase into that. Your proportional share changes. So your proportional share tax changes. That's the only thing that's missing. We still have growth. There was still growth in 2020. And when we look at growth, what's important to know, we'll look at these numbers in a moment. Growth is carried by new taxpayers, not existing taxpayers. So if we start the year with a million-dollar tax levy and at the end of the year, we have a million one, that extra 100,000 came from people that built new homes or new businesses or built an extension on their house or a garage, things like that. So that actually is what enhances our tax base, gives us more money as municipalities. Of course, more taxpayers to take care of as well. Tax policy, we still have a range of options around tax policy. And tax policy allows us to change the distribution of tax. So how is it shared? And we'll talk about that as well. And then levy change. Levy change is the discretionary, not fully discretionary. We work within our political limits and our fiscal responsibility frameworks. But that is where we're raising more money off the same taxpayers for the year because of increased pressures or spending requirements. So we don't have reassessment this year. What's the difference? Every year, we had more assessment. So is that not growth? Just to clarify, and we're just, when we bring up reassessment again, we're not changing the shape or, or, or size or makeup of our tax base. When we go to sleep on December 31st and wake up on January 1st, we have the same taxpayers. If we have phase-in, we might have a bit more CVA. But that's not more tax because it's, it's the same taxpayers. What growth is, is where we're actually changing the base. And it can be positive or negative. So what did growth do in Gray County in, in 2020? You were up by 1.84% overall in assessment. Now, not every dollar of assessment is worth the same as dollar tax. But that's 1.84%. So $350 million approximately in new CVA. And again, that's not phase-in, that's not reassessment. Those are new properties. What's that mean on a tax landscape? Well, when we bring it in on tax, it actually is a higher percentage, 1.242 million dollars on the county levy. That means that when you folks got together last year and you passed your levy bylaw, you struck rates that were raising 59,800,000 dollars approximately off the roll as it was returned last year on December 31st, when you went to, to sleep. If you didn't stay up for New Year's, obviously. Then there was an additional 1.24 million dollars in new tax revenue available to you. Now, some of that might have come on late in the year. Some of it might be for 2021. But from a budgetary perspective or a levy perspective from the county, we now have 61,052. That's our starting point. And that would be the amount you could raise this year with a zero levy increase and a zero levy decrease. So we're going to start the year, we're going to raise that money. In every year since 2008, we have had to reset rates. Again, we have the same tax base. We have to reset rates to account for that phase-in. This is the first year where our 2020 rates are actually our 2021 notional rates and set our notional base. So we always, in every single year, always keep these numbers constant. But to do that, these numbers change and these numbers change. So who pays what? We see tax shifts. There are no tax shifts this year. And this is true at both the county and local levies. We have no inter-municipal shifts, inter-property shifts. If you didn't do anything to your property last year, you lived there on January 1st, you didn't improve it, you went to sleep on December 31st. And if municipalities didn't change any tax policy or raise any more money, you pay the exact same tax bill as last year. So this is very unique. It's, it's been many years since this has been the case. And when we look and we measure shifts on a whole different, on a whole bunch of different ways, inter-municipal are, is, would just be the, the roll-up of all the inter-property shifts at the property level and then the class level. We can look at it a number of different ways. But, you know, we had some net shifts last year between jurisdictions as, as values changed. You know, the farm was a big factor. This year, no shifts. So everything is, is a level playing field, which does give us a bit of a blank slate from tax policy that we haven't seen in a while. We know that, you know, in, in the past years, we've seen shifts on the farm. So if we wanted to consider, say, a reduction of a tax ratio, multi-residential, we'd have to look at, well, it's going to shift this much, but farms already picked up this much or residential's already picked up this much. It's a layering effect. This year, we can have very independent impacts with our tax policy. One of the things, the other thing that happened, and this isn't, this is more something that happened to, to your taxpayers rather than from the county, is the province did reduce business education tax rates. Depending on where you were before, there's been a migration to uniform rates over many years. You had some of those rates that were actually high. You were kind of riding the ceiling down where some municipalities were riding the floor down. And believe it or not, this is dependent on where your education balance tax was in 97. But significant shifts. So your business taxpayers are going to pay, you know, 3.5 million dollars less this year than they did last year. Education rates for residential farm, they, they, they haven't changed. And this is, this is great. This does not come out of your local education system at all. The schools are funded by upper pupil formula. So that kind of gives us our baseline. That's what's happened this year. We are where we were on December 31st from a municipal perspective. We are, you know, 1.2 million dollars ahead of where we were last year when you struck your levy. We have an education tax cut. So what are our decisions this year? Well, aside from spending, there's tax policy decisions that have to be made and there's tax policy decisions that can be made. And our tag, when we talk about tax policy, it's really a number of tools that allow us to distribute how the tax is shared, whether that is between classes or properties. And all the tax policy tools in our toolbox and in the municipal act, they'll hinge on one of two different factors. One is use and one is value. And that's how we distribute tax in Ontario. Use is by class. So we have ratios and discounts. And that's how we distribute tax in Ontario. Use is by class, so we have ratios and discounts. And value is by the CVA. And we can do things like cap taxes and phase them in or put on graduated tax, we change the value curve. Or we can change how we share amongst different property classes or on the basis of use. And those are really the two variables that Ontario's tax system works on. So ratios, all of these have to be moved and adjusted within a number of very sort of strict provincial rules. These were your 2020 tax ratios for each class. Where ratio is 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 less than one, then that rate is going to be less than, you know, a fraction of the residential. Where it's higher, it's going to be a multiple of the residential. But it's not really about the rates, the rates are actually the outcome. It's about balance of taxation. How much weight do we want to put on assessment that's used differently? We have a little bit of mostly downward downward flexibility because these ranges of fairness as they're they're called. That's not my term, that's a very subjective word, but that's what they're actually called, the regulation. The general rule is we can move towards or within those. So for the most case, we're looking at downward movement on ratios. And then there's property subclasses. And what property subclasses are? Are there a way of of reducing the rate for a property that is underutilized or utilized in a different way compared to the rest of the class? The idea of current value assessment was that we were going to let value dictate the full balance of taxation. But the last minute, they got nervous and said, well, we better, if you have vacant land, maybe you need a lower tax rate. We express these as factors. So right now, we have vacant land, excess land, farmland awaiting development is when somebody has a building, sorry, a plan of subdivision, but they're still farming the land, but they've gone to that. Then we're going to tax them at a slightly higher rate than they would if they were pure farm with no subdivision on it. And then the second class of farmland is where building permits have been issued. This is really rare because that's usually a fairly short window. And then we have the small scale on farm business, which was introduced a couple of years ago. That is a different type of subclass. It says, if you have a commercial improvement or industrial improvement that's valued at less than a million dollars, then we can, the first 50,000 get taxed at a discounted rate. The county doesn't use that. And then we have the new small business subclass, which we'll talk about later. So these are subject to to discounts and there is some new flexibility this year. And that's what we're going to focus on. But what these tax policy tools, ratios and discounts is, as I said before, they change or alter our balance of taxation. Farm here has 15.6% of the CVA in Gray or the property values. They carry 3.78% of the tax. When we go to the other end of the spectrum, we have, you know, industrial at 0.95. And we, you know, we tax that at a higher ratio. So we change the balance of taxation. And that's that's basically the exercise. We've done a sensitivity model based on new flexibility that was offered to municipalities. A lot of municipalities feel that this has been long awaited because, as I say, if we have a vacant piece of property and it's one acre and it's next door to an occupied piece of property that's also one acre, but has a, you know, a drugstore on it. The drugstore on that one acre is paying more tax because they have a accessible improvement on it. But so there's a natural division there. The underlying land, the drugstore is paying more than the vacant land because they're paying full on their land and the vacant. So we've done a model here where it shows eliminating the subclass discounts for commercial vacant and excess land and industrial vacant excess land. And bringing those dollars, holding them directly within those classes. And again, this is sort of a unique thing that could be done this year because there's no underlying shifts. We're not moving this tax generally. If we move that generally, we'd be looking at, you know, point, you know, 1/10 of a percent of an adjustment. In this case, we're actually able to move the commercial industrial ratios down. And I'll talk about some advantages of that. But we need to know what we're talking about here. What is vacant and excess land? Obviously, we drive by a lot, it's vacant, that's vacant. But what is it from a tax perspective? Well, we have a vacant parcel, is this a parcel here? And that means that it's in, say, the commercial class only because that swath of land is zoned for commercial use. So if I own it, then I can use it as commercial down the road. If I end up using it for multi-residential, it will go to multi-residential tax class. But while it's vacant, it's going to be commercial. We have our property over here, which is a combined property of B and C. The B is the occupied commercial, so we have a couple of stores here, a store and a gas station. And then we have the C, and that's an element of the larger property. We call that excess land. It is in excess of the zoning requirements or the planning requirements to support these two buildings here. So, you know, Gray Highlands or Chatsworth or Owen Sound, whoever it is says, oh, well, you need this and you need this much parking space and all that. Now, the rest of it, which is possibly for future use, is that would be excess land, it would be taxed at a lower rate. So these are the kind of things we're talking about. There's some other stuff in vacant rail yards and things like that. But this is generally what we're talking about here. When we process this model, then we are bringing the commercial occupied, your industrial class you'll see is very small, so it's a higher magnitude change, but it's a lower dollar change. We're insulating pretty much all other classes. Again, if we were to do this commercial class and take $35,000 off it in a normal year without doing it this way, what we would see is that most of that would go to, you know, the residential would pick up that cost because they're 80% of the base. So we would, we would see them picking that up. In this case, we're really confined within the classes. It's not a perfect balance here because we do have to balance upper, upper and lower tier levies. But by making this change, we're moving $35,000 off the B properties onto the A and C properties. There are some intermunicipal shifts, there always are, because everybody has a different balance of taxation. The difference this year compared to any other year is that, again, we're moving that shift normally. If we saw a, you know, 6,000 or shift on Owen Sound, what would happen is their residential class would pick up 80, 90% of that. This year, it is, Owen Sound is a little bit different, but there's a complementary model for them as well that passes it through. It's going to those vacant and excess lands. And actually, with the Owen Sound, that long, long migration we've had over the past 20 years to get the ratios, this actually allows us to achieve parity on the industrial ratio with the with the county. And then a bit more of a flow through to to commercial, which is interesting. So we're moving that money. What's it mean? Well, it is a high magnitude change for these vacant and excess lands. And we feel that it's really important for you as decision makers, as councillors, to understand what we're talking about. It's not a ton of dollars, but it is a high magnitude. Now, the vacant folks, that's a standalone parcel, that's a single piece of land excess. They're actually going to see a significant offset when they get their reduction on the B portion. But the other thing to consider is that the province has already eliminated these subclasses for the education portion, so they're already at the full rate for education. So on a year to year basis, when I look at last year's tax bill compared to this year's tax bill, and I take into account my business education tax cut that I'm getting, now this is before levy change, we're looking at, you know, much smaller magnitude changes for these properties. They are not huge. But, and you know, the dollars, see, there's some some offset here. So it's, it's, it's interesting how it works. This is a unique situation this year. Again, the excess property, so when we consider the whole property, so that whole BC, they won't even, they're kind of, they're a decrease across the board because these, these folks are getting the business education tax cut, they're getting the ratio reduction on the full portion. That little tiny piece, as you can imagine, if we, this was your property, this is a million or $2 million. This land here is, you know, 50, 60,000 in terms of the backlot. So those are the implications. It gives you an opportunity to bring down your ratios. Evening out the balance between vacant and excess land and occupied land. So we're moving from active businesses to unimproved property. That is also an advantage in terms of financial stability. Because the lower we have our ratios, the better off we will be in the face of reassessment, appeal losses, things like that. We know that lower ratios give us lower, longer term stability over time, even though they can sometimes result in a higher sort of residential rate on the day we strike rates. So that's my current sort of discussion about the current years. I thought we would stop here. Pause.
Thank you very much for that, Peter. And council with your leave and Madam Clerk with your guidance. I'm going to suggest that maybe how we open things up to introducing item 6A. And perhaps we could have a full discussion within the body of that, of that item.
I think Peter still has some more presentation to do. This was just the first part. He does have further slides to continue.
My apologies. So Peter, were you, were you hoping to have questions at this point before you move on or did you want to continue on?
I wasn't sure whether now would be an appropriate time to talk about those immediate tax policy issues I just discussed. And then talk about the small business class, I would defer to 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 staff on that, how they'd like me to proceed.
Certainly, I see Kevin's hand up and Kevin, I'll invite you to pipe in in a second here. But but just so the council knows, what I'm attempting to do is at some point get item 6A on the floor. And I'm hoping that the discussion can happen within that and that we would benefit from Peter's presence to be able to have a fulsome discussion on that item. Oh, Kevin, I've lost you.
Sorry, Warden, you recognized me, so I pulled my hand down, but yeah. No, we just thought this is a big, a bit of a change here that on its own, that we'd pause here and let council discuss that and question that, and then then go on to the other notable item of change that the province has introduced the small business property class and give focus on it and then have questions on that. And then, then like you, like you had suggested, then if we could move to my report and I could just surprise based on what you've done and hopefully then get direction on my report.
Okay, excellent. Thank you then. So we're going to invite questions then on what's been presented so far. So with that said, I see a few hands. I'd like to acknowledge councillor Silver first.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. The, my question is on slide nine, slide 20. It mentions those numbers are derived for an upper tier and a lower tier tax rate. Since we have such a wide variety of lower tier tax rates, I know ours are about a third of what Owen Sounds are. How does that analysis on slide 20 change when, you know, you're looking at a rate of, I think ours is 0.037, 037 and Owen Sounds is 0.011 something. So what, what ratios for local taxes and upper tier does that analysis use on page 20?
Through you, Chair. That is the total in our full report. And in Kevin's staff report that is on the agenda, those are broken out by local area municipality using the local area rates. And then for all of those subject properties that we've used in our typical property example, this is the countywide average. Considering all your unique local rates on a property by property basis, we didn't display them all because they would, that would be just sort of a lot of information for a slide. But they are in Kevin's report by local area municipality.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Keatingy, you're next.
Mr. Warden, thank you. And I wanted to ask Mr. Freeze if I may a question related to the tax rates, and I know we've touched on it before, but while we have you, Mr. Freeze, the multi-res existing units at 1.44 and new multi-res at 1. Can you just expand a little bit on the differential between those two classes for us?
Yes, through your chair. The new multi-res class was introduced back in 2000 as an optional class. The idea was that a municipality could incent the building of new multi-residential, obviously. It was mostly used actually over, over the 2000s, most new multi-res was built, it's public housing, there wasn't a lot of private stock added. And, and so that brought the cost down for housing authorities. As part of the Liberals' last budget, they brought in mandatory, so it came in across the board. And we have a ratio of one on that. And the idea is that you're in that class for 35 years. And then you go pop back out into the regular multi-res class. The policy logic prior to it being mandatory was generally caution because we had to be careful about offering incentives to new taxpayers when those old stock were paying a higher value. Now that we have it as mandatory and the new stuff is coming in at one, then the consideration, the policy consideration has switched a bit. And a lot of municipalities are saying, well, maybe we should be bringing our old stock down. And multi-res is the most moved ratio province-wide. It is coming down generally. So that's, that's really the difference. There's no difference between the buildings other than age. It's a purely discretionary. When was your building permit taken out? There's no difference between why you're in one class or the other. I hope that's your, was your question.
Thank you. And councillor Keatingy, anything else?
No, thank you, Mr. Warden.
Very good. Deputy Warden McQueen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and thanks so far for the presentation. Just going back to, I'm looking at slide four where it talked about, we know this year, as you mentioned, and we're aware of that, there's no new phase in assessment. So basically, the playing ground is equal across, there's no change in shifts. But some municipalities, I understand, take that phase in and they they add it as extra tax revenue where you're really supposed to reset that button. And as you sort of say in your slide, it's supposed to shift the tax, but it's not supposed to create new tax as far as that phase in, other than new growth. And this will be a real reflective year of not having those phase in values. But in your mind, how many municipalities and percentage wise do do that type of, they sort of, it's almost like double dipping. And I would, and just my other question, are you available to do presentations like this at our lower tier municipalities? So there's two questions there.
Through you, Chair. I would be, well, the second question is very easy. I'm happy at any time to do a presentation in information session, and we have done them in the past, just generally happy to anytime. What I tell, this is the advice I get, the best way I can answer, this is the advice I give my client to our, we report to staff as our clients. Whatever, present the right information, the Act says, and there's no one line in the Act, and that's one of the tricky parts. There's no one line, but there are many portions of the Act. We reset these rates and set a revenue neutral. That is how it works. If you say, oh, I'm freezing my tax rates, then you, you're putting through a tax increase, that's a levy increase, however you want to say it. If you say it's not, you're wrong, and that is an objective comment, it's not an opinion. When they froze reassessments, one of the things I did for the Municipal Finance Officers Association was do a presentation on, make sure you've explained this, explaining this right, and if you did it wrong last year, you're going to be in trouble this year. So that approach is actually going to come home to roost in 2021 a bit. And we flagged that as a caution way back in the, way back in August. You have to reset. There are no new people, and that's why I created this slide here to really drive home that if you're raising more money here, you're raising it off the same taxpayers, that is a tax increase. There are no two ways, two ways about that. The overall majority of our clients do it the way I've explained it.
So just to follow up, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead.
So, so those that, and I, you're right, every refreshes my mind is if you're doing it that way, you need to explain to, to your that you are also doing that. And you're absolutely right, I have to tell. The other side is if those that continue to do that is a double, a double way of raising taxation. And all of a sudden, our next phase gets readjusted, but it's almost like we're like, we're basing right now our, our 2012 values spread out to 2016. The next value was going to be based on, I think, 2000, was it January? Or was it, I'm not sure what the province is going to redo as far as, but we do know here, especially in our part of Ontario, property values. And we see it across Great Bruce, we see it everywhere across the province where real estate and, and pre, and, and pre-core have gone, I'm not sure how, what the perfect descriptive word is, but they've gone crazy, so to speak, as some might say. So if all of a sudden we get to a new reset and we have a new four-year phase in and it's maybe readjusted to January 1st of 2020, who knows? I don't know what's going to, I have no idea. Isn't it going to be a real reality check for those municipalities, especially those that are taking that phase in value? And, and using that as, as a, as a, as a additional revenue or, or using that process?
A through you, Warden. Yeah, yeah, you know, if we, if we double our, our values, which we could see in some jurisdictions, we're seeing, we're seeing assessment to sales ratios in the, in the 55, 60% range, which is like unheard of. It's, that would be crazy. I will, are they going to move it a bit and claim that they have a tax decrease? I don't know. I, I, we, we have to be, you know, we can't speculate what will happen in, in those circumstances. They will probably say they're able to put, put a tax cut through. I'm not sure. You know, people have migrated. It's taken a long time, but more and more councils look at it the right way over time. 15 years ago, it was, it was a hard message to sell this picture. People get it, I think, more and more.
Right. Great. Thank you. I look forward to have you do a presentation at Gray Highlands. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Mill. You're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. A question I had was in relation to the, the notion of getting rid of the subclass in the, the excess land and vacant land. And there, you know, the rationale, I suppose, is that it would encourage property owners to make maximum use or develop unused property. But in the rural areas of Gray County, there may be examples of, well, I know there are examples of excess land that is not developable. And, you know, the, the excess land subclass decrease, or whatever you want to discount, I guess you want to call it, is very valid. And so if you get rid of those, you know, by adjusting the ratio, you hope to level out that change of fluctuation in overall taxes. But in cases where that land is not developable, it, it makes no difference. You can't incentivize to do something that isn't possible. So I'm, I'm curious to hear your reaction or your thoughts on, you know, that admittedly small niche problem, but it's very much there, I would suggest.
Through you, Warden. If the land is not available for development, then it wouldn't actually be. The, the subclasses are unique to commercial and industrial property classes. If it is just sort of unusable land that's sitting there, that's the kid, it's probably residential. It may even be something else like managed forest or, or things like that, or conservation land particularly, which might be exempt. We would very rarely see commercial or industrial vacant land that was unusable. Somebody has gone to the trouble of having it zoned for commercial use generally. That's, those are, those are the parcels we're talking about. And when, and when we look at the, I'll just flip ahead here. One of the things, we're not talking, these are the, these are the total number of properties that we're looking at on a countywide basis that, that we're talking about. So 130 vacant commercial and 198 vacant industrial. These excess lands, of course, are attached to improved properties. So those purely vacant lands, it's a pretty small proportion of, of your, you know, properties. Of course, there, there may be some that, that fall into the category you described, but generally there are ones that have been zoned for use.
Well, I'll agree overall, they're a very small number, but if it's the one that you're paying taxes on, it, it's important. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kevin, is there anything that you wanted to add on that subject?
Just, just a couple of things. I think Peter maybe is not aware that his screen's not shared anymore. So when he references like,
Oh.
We shut it off.
Apologize.
Yeah. And secondly, just to, to that, we just thought with the change in the business education tax, this was, if you wanted to do something like this and equal out, I said it. Even on, even on the illustration that Counselor Millen was showing, this would be the, the time to do it when they're receiving that education tax cut that, that we could then utilize that and assist in this. That, that was some of the rationale here. This is where if you didn't have a, a year where you didn't have that happening, then if you tried to do this, if you did have a land like you're, you're saying, Counselor Millen, that, that they would be seeing a significant then increase in rates on a percentage-wise basis.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Peter, I don't see any other hands. So this might be the signal for you to continue.
Yes.
So, yeah, so yeah, share your screen again, Peter. That's good.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
So the new small business subclass, this is probably one of the most notable property tax reform measures contained in the 2020 budget. And it is an optional small business property class and changes the assessment act will allow for a lower rate of tax to be applied to qualifying small businesses. Once a regulation is filed, we don't have a regulation, so this really isn't on the table for this year for that reason and a number of others. The, the big difference between this tax tool is that it comes with significant design implementation and ongoing administrative responsibilities for the municipalities that choose to move forward with it. If you said I want to adopt the office building class, I would pull out that assessment from those objective indicators, you know, a certain square foot of an office building. And I would say, well, this is what you can do with your ratio when we move forward. That's it. It's on the roll. Small businesses are not on the roll and for all intents and purposes, they can't be identified through objective assessment measures. So municipalities need to decide what small business looks like locally. They determine what indicators or criteria they want to rely upon to, to make sure we can make those choices. So we, we have a vision and then we have, how do we determine who qualifies? We have an administrative structure we have to set up because unlike all the other classes, we actually have to give impact, the role numbers. We have to say, this is our small business class. And, you know, once it's up and running, there's going to be a new layer of complication. And depending on who we want to capture and what our small business class or our vision looks like is going to affect things. There's a few concerns with this program. One is it was presented as a viable tool to respond to the pandemic and it is absolutely not. This is a horrible tax relief program. If you want to help your commercial class, drop your commercial ratio. We're not, for a number of reasons, number one, implementing is going to be a significant undertaking and that should not be rushed, especially in a two-tier. If, and we've done a couple of these workshops already, we get you all in a room and we say, what's small business look like to you? That conversation is going to go in a number of different directions very quickly and it becomes obvious, it's going to take us a while to, to narrow that down. And if we rush this, we're going to include people and exclude people that we don't want to. It's going to be a mess. But even if we had a perfect program today and we had a plan ready for tomorrow morning, you're not going to see these reductions on the roll for 2021 and nobody's going to get a reduction this year. It's just not going to be possible to do that. We, we can't make the adjustments until they're on the roll and that's not going to happen. So what do we think you should do if, if you're interested in this or just want to know about the program? We got to start with a sketch and general vision of the small business class. We have to do that first. Once we've done that, we can layer that vision on the assessment base. And we can say, this is what we're going to need to do to identify those properties within your, that, that match your vision in the role or on the role. And a lot of it, in many circumstances, is going to have to be application-based because again, we don't know the size or shape of a, a business behind that front door. Once, it's not until we've done that that we can actually start to figure out how many businesses are going to be captured, how much it's going to cost us and who's going to pay. So those are some of the critical reasons I'm strongly urging my clients not even to consider this for 2021. So defining small business, as I said, it's going to be tricky. Arriving at a definition everybody agrees on may be impossible and it's especially in a two-tier. The, the, the thing that gets introduced very quickly is we are drawing lines. We're not just conveying a benefit to our happy vision of, of, you know, the hallmark Main Street. We're deciding winners, losers, who's in, who's out, and the people that are out are going to pay. And then we start having those discussions. It gets, gets a little, you know, different. And these are subjective concepts. What do you think small business is? As I said, traditional property assessment information is not going to help us on that front because we don't know how the property is occupied. We don't know who's responsible for the tax burden. This policy contemplates tenants or portions of properties, which, which suggests that a small business as a tenant could qualify. If there's certain conditions, we'd have to work that out carefully. Size of the operation and size of the organization can be very different. We have two variety stores. One is a family-owned business. One is outwardly the same, but it's owned by a, a national chain, which one's a small business? How do we want to define it in Gray County? Type of business? Do we want to focus on sectors? Do we want to focus on locations? As we get down that list, I actually see the, the, the program being a little bit more useful. So some of the big things we'll have to consider, and again, there's no way of doing this on the assessment roll. Are we going to offer this to tenants? If we are, we have to have an application-based system and then we have to have criteria. You're going to have to bring us a lease, show you're responsible for the property taxes. And then we're going to tell impact that unit 10 in that strip mall is in the small business class. And hopefully that will flow through to them. Tricky stuff. We want to make sure it's equitable, but the more equitable we make it, the more we put in a structure around it, the more complex it's going to be. So we're going to have to make some balancing decisions between complexity and equity. We don't want to have to hire 20 staff people to, to manage this either. It, it's going to be, it's going to be quite tricky. But we want to be, we can't just say, let's take the easy way out. You have to own the property. If we have two, you know, two bakeries, one's a standalone, one's at a strip mall, they're in direct competition. Is it fair to give a 30% break to the one that's on the street? I could argue that the one that owns their property is a bigger business than the one that who's a tenant, that maybe they have more capital, you know? So are we going to look at business organization? That gets tricky too. You know, we're talking about a bakery, a small bakery, one's on the street. It's owned by the, the Jones family. The other one's a tenant in a similar, similarly building. It's a locally owned franchise, but now they have a recognizable sign. That doesn't mean they're a big business, but maybe they own 10 franchises. Are we going to make determinations around that? And the third, you know, it's all by a nationwide chain. So we have to dig into stuff that is just not on the roll, that has to do with operational size, organizational structure, all those types of things. If we want to get to small business on a global scale. And what I mean by that is we want to capture all small businesses in Gray County. That is where I believe it's almost impossible to do. Now, we can get into some other things. Do we want to talk about the tourism sector, hospitality sector? You know, I, we had, I was in a meeting with another upper tier and one counselor said, hey, we have a lot of seasonal business. We'd like them to have a bit of a break. Could we use this tool? Well, sure, if you could agree on that. You know, are the business types we want to exclude? Here's where I think we might actually be able to do something. Do we want to use it for very specific needs? And remember, if council says, oh, we want to give all small business a break and you try to do something global and it fails because we're missing tenants, we're missing this, you open to criticism. But if you frame your objectives in, well, we want to protect our Main Streets. And so any property that fronts on Main Street, we really don't want those to be boarded up and everybody going to the big box stores. So our objective for small businesses, we want small face-out businesses. And we don't care if the coffee shops, Starbucks, or, you know, the Jones family, that's our objective. We want, we don't want Main Street plowed under. Well, then that's, you know, that's fair and that's equitable. And you can also administer something like that extremely easily. You just identify the role numbers and you go from there. Pretty simple. You can, you know, you can set some parameters in that. So by sort of, by, by bottom line is, I think this program is much better potentially as a tax incentive or as a tax protection mechanism. The thought is complicated. There's some of the things we would have to do through the official plan or CIP because you can do it under council's discretion without ministerial authority and all those types of things than it would be as a tax relief program. I just don't see it as a viable tax relief program. And again, mainly because you're going to have to define it locally and we're going to have to have the policy outcomes that's your policy objectives. Or you're going to be open, you know, to, 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 to criticism on, on, on the policies, not a meeting those objectives. And this will be a very visual policy if, if a municipality chooses to adopt it. So, you know, things like Main Street, things like new commercial zones, maybe you service a business park, it's an incubator. I could even envision, and we've had these, we, we service this business park, how do we get people in there? While it's been difficult in the past, you could even do something like the new multi-res and say, you're in the small business class for the first five years. And then you're out. I believe that there will be the flexibility to design it in that way. So, you know, there, there's a lot of complications. I've, this slide, I'm going to skip over, I've kind of talked a lot about this, but we need to know what the cost will be. That's super important. Who's going to pay? Who's going to be in? Who's going to be out? No matter how, whether we want to do the global thing or the targeted thing or nothing at all. If you're going to look at it, we want to know what it's going to cost and we can't do that this year. And so my recommendation is, and I don't think I've ever made a recommendation this strong in the past globally, over the past 20 years. But we really, I strongly urge you not to, you know, even try to do this this year. There's no regulation. So I think that's sort of off the table anyways. But, you know, nobody's going to receive a break from this this year. You're not missing out on anything. If, if, you know, by not having it available, I almost think to myself, has the province delayed the regulation because they realized that? What a sort of nest of, of this, this might have been. So, you know, it could be used. It's, it may be something you want to discuss or explore, but not in baby steps.
All right. Thank you very much, Peter. If we could go back so I can see the, the full screen of, there we go. Thank you very much. So Madam Clerk, I'm in your hands now. I, I think I would like to invite questions on this last part. But also open it up to bring it in, item six A. So should we maybe entertain those questions and then I turn to six A and Kevin's presentation? And we keep our guests here in case there are further questions once we get into six A.
That would be my recommendation, questions from the last part of, of Mr. Freeze's presentation and then moving on to Kevin's report.
Thank you, then. Counselors, are there any questions? I don't see any hands. I see Counselor Potter. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And this is probably a quick one, but are there any comp?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. This is probably a quick one, but are there any complications that arise because of business improvement areas? Provincially mandated BIAs?
Through you, Warden. Not. No, because the BIA fees are against the assessment. They're they're levied a little bit differently than than the taxes, so that would run separately. We would certainly want to consider those issues and and have all that on the table in order to consider something. And so, you know, it's a good question. It's a question that would have to come up as part of the design.
Also, so ever?
Yes, a little bit along those same lines. My I have two questions. One is, how does this work with the anti-bonusing provisions of the municipal act? Because you are giving an economic advantage. So what what takes precedence?
Through you, Warden. This would not be prohibited by the anti-bonusing because it would be part of your tax policy, the taxes as levied. So it wouldn't be that you are, it's it's really no different than when we have the when we have the new multi res versus the multi res, where we, the the anti-bonusing. I will say though, that it poses a bit of a policy logic conflict with that. And puts counselors in a bit of a difficult situation that that anti-bonusing is actually intended to protect you from, which is being asked for special treatment. So, you know, according to the act, you're okay, but you could see some similar types of circumstances.
And the other thing is, this is a in a two tier system. So the responsibility for determining the classification is at the upper tier. Because they look after our tax classes. So clear that Gray County will be doing all the work on this.
Through you, Warden. Technically, it's it's an opportunity responsibility. I believe that if you were to implement it, that it would require participation of the local tax offices on our administration. And that's part of the structure that would have to be designed. Local tax offices are on the ground level. They're better equipped. That being said, none of that has been has been considered in terms of how that would be done. Those are all things that need to be hashed out and we should look at carefully.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Soever. I don't see other hands. So with that said, maybe this is the time for us to move to item 6A. And if our delegate, Peter, if you can stay on board, so we may have questions as we get into 6A. Item 6A is our tax policy. It's moved by Counselor Robinson and seconded by Counselor Carlton. And Kevin, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Warden. Yeah, so just summarizing, Peter's covered off a lot of lot of my reports. So, but just to summarize my report, the changes to the 2021 tax policy that staff are recommending is regarding the elimination of the vacant excess subclass discounts with a corresponding tax reduction to the commercial and industrial classes to main the class by class tax balance there. We, the the remaining tax ratios and tax reductions would stay the same as they were for 2020. That would include the tax reduction for farmland and waiting development. So where it's a type one still being farmed, but it would receive that 25% tax reduction or in 75%, 75% reduction. We be taxed at 25%. And we're a type four with the building permits been issued, it would go to 100% of the class. Then that's that's doing that for a long time here. That's the the new small business property subclass. We would defer that at this point in time till we saw the regulation from the province and and then can entertain that more at that time, once we understand it better. And yeah. And then the optional property, optional classes of property. Back in 2005, we established the resort condo property class. And 2012, we established the new res class, but this time staff is not recommending any new optional property classes for 2021. And the business class taxing capping. We've utilized all the optional capping tools available by the provinces provided. And now all our business properties in 2020 have progressed to the full CVA. So we'll be getting, we'll be finding out of that, out of that process. So. So that's a summary of what we're doing. We've discussed, have had two meetings with the local treasures, the staff group on these. And these were supported to go forward with the elimination of the subclasses. You know, they've, it it kind of goes in hand with the the vacant unit rebate, what they wanted to see gone as well. So anyway, that's I'm putting it forth for council's consideration here. And I appreciate Peter being here to help answer questions. He has a lot more expertise in this. And I've seen other areas of the province that things have gone on and can illustrate those experiences to us as well. So. So thank you, Warden.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Counsel, are there any questions for either Kevin or Peter with respect to this report? Nothing on my first screen and nothing on my second screen. If that is the case, then I think it's time to call the question.
Mr. Warden?
Sorry, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Warden, for recognizing me. If it is the appropriate time, I would like to put a motion to defer. I I would like more more time to to review this. And I would suggest that if my colleagues around the virtual horseshoe would be so inclined for a deferral till to our next committee, the whole meeting, I would be appreciative of that. So I would be looking for a second or for my deferral. Thank you very much.
Okay, then we have a second or for Counselor Robinson's motion. I guess that's your answer right there.
Oh, I do see.
Counselor McQueen, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so then we'll have questions and debate on the the motion to defer. Counselor Soever, do you have a comment with respect to the motion to defer?
No, I was going to second that though.
Oh, okay. My apologies. Any other Counselor Desai? I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. If if Counselor if the Counselor could perhaps, if Counselor Robinson could perhaps elaborate on why she would like to defer this motion, it to me, it seems a fairly straightforward motion. It was a straightforward report. And so I'm just trying to trying to understand why the why the request to defer. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Yes, thank you very much. And thank you, Counselor Desai, for for asking the question. You know, certainly we have the agendas issued in enough time to review the information on it and ask questions. You know, based on the presentation that we've received very detailed and I very much appreciate the report that I have. You know what? It does seem, as I put forward the motion to move the item, just looking for additional time to actually address it, drill down on the information and have it brought forward to the next, the next committee, the whole. That's what I would be looking for, just additional time to review it, assess impact overall. Thank you.
Okay. You're good to go, Counselor Desai?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? I do not see any other hands. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
If that's the case, then perhaps we can call the question on the motion to defer. Is, well, is there anyone opposed? And that's going to be by a show of hands. To the motion to defer, if you're opposed, you would raise your hand. So I see one, two, three, four. And why don't I say anyone in favor of the motion to defer? Would you please raise your hand? One, two, three. Clearly that is Carrie. Okay, thank you. Then we don't need to deal with the main motion. We'll have this item at our next council meeting.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Okay, so Madam.
Mr. Warden, I just, I just will let you know that I think Counselor Millen has left the meeting, just so you're aware.
Okay, thank you very much. So Madam Clerk, we're now at noon. We have not heard from our third and our third delegate is going to be dealing with item, you know, it's related to item 6B as well. We have been sitting for, you know, about an hour and a half now. So people are going to need at least a small break. So I am questioning, questioning whether we could have our delegates. I know we told them 11:00 AM. But would they be able to come back after a break or do we need to push on and deal with them right now?
They are with us now, but it's certainly up to counsel and yourself, Mr. Warden, to determine they will have a, their presentation is about 30 to 40 minutes long. So.
Okay. And could I ask, since they are here, would they be opposed to us taking a break and and coming back to them?
Through you, too. If I can be heard. Sorry. If if I can, because I can't hear anyone speaking. If I can be heard, we're, I think it's we're totally fine with waiting 20 or 30 minutes or so, whatever counsel requires. And we can either log back in in the same link or we'll follow directions from either Heather or Amanda.
Okay, so counsel, with your leave, my suggestion is that we we take a break. We we come back at 12:30. So we'll have a proper lunch break. And we come back at 12:30 and deal with this delegation and the rest of the agenda. Is anyone sort of not feeling that? I don't see any shakes of the head. So if that's the case, then I'm going to suggest that we break now, come back at 12:30 sharp. And thank you to our delegates. I really appreciate you accommodating us in this way.
Of course.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Okay, we are back. We definitely have quorum. And do we have our delegates?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Is someone going to introduce them?
I think Amanda will introduce them.
Okay, excellent. Kevin?
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Oh.
It's actually me. Thank you, Ms. Jordan, and good afternoon, everyone. I'm Amanda Brooks, the Asset Management Coordinator. And I'm very excited to be here today because it means that we have a final draft of Gray County's first ever asset management strategy that's ready to be presented to you. So Public Sector Digest, or PSD, the external consultants that we've been working with since 2019 on this project will be presenting the strategy. And then I'll speak to my report after, which is really just to provide some more background information, summarize, and then ask for your approval on the proposed strategy and for your support and staff moving forward with the many recommendations that are made in the strategy. So we have Israel Ahmed, or Iz, who's a senior consultant with PSD and was our project lead. Jordan Gonda and John Murray from PSD all here with us to present. So I'll pass it off to Iz now for their part of the presentation.
You aren't on mute, Iz?
What a classic mistake. It's only, it's not like I've done this before 100 times. Good afternoon, everybody, and Amanda, thank you for that introduction. And even before I put some slides on the screen for you to walk you through this asset management strategy, I definitely wanted to acknowledge the amount of work staff have put into this. And I think it really highlights the need for Amanda's role. I know it's a newer role in the municipal sector, the dedicated individual to lead asset management program development. I've worked with other counties, a couple of neighboring ones, where it has been a recommendation of ours to try to structure the organization, at least the infrastructure planning or the asset management side in such a way that there is a dedicated individual because it's such a complex undertaking, requiring so many different skill sets. And Amanda has shown, I would say, all of the skill sets that are sort of common in this field. And so the asset management program at Wood County is in pretty good hands. And she was a pleasure to work with. And a lot of times a bit frustrating because her questions can be quite difficult. So I want to commend Amanda and the rest of the county staff. At the same time, I also wanted to say that the RFP that was put together was extremely challenging. So I also wanted to acknowledge staff for putting together such an RFP because it really put us in a bind because we weren't able to break it into two or three different projects that we would normally deliver. It was all packaged nicely and very strategically into one. So we developed any strategy, but part of that was also what typically goes into an asset management plan. And I'll try to make that distinction a little clearer as I go through the presentation. So with that, I'm going to attempt to share my screen, and I anticipate there will be some challenges. If not, excellent. If so, just bear with me. And I will... Is that, I'm assuming that's visible? Amanda, you can give me the heads up. Okay.
I can see it.
Excellent. Okay, so with that, I'll get going. So project background. So this project is called an asset management strategy. And I'm sure, you know, by now, all of the members of council are fully aware of what an asset management plan is. Ontario has been at it for seven, eight years now. This one is a little bit different. There's some fundamental differences between an asset management strategy and an asset management plan or AMP. And it was a very comprehensive document. There is about six different other deliverables that went into it. The asset management policy review, we also conducted a current state assessment and then establish current maturity levels for the county's asset management program. We did an objective, dispassionate, thorough data gap analysis of all the county's infrastructure spatial data sets. And then we developed a state of the infrastructure section. And this is likely something you're quite familiar with. It's an important section of AMP. And we also then worked with staff, individual departments, to develop risk and criticality frameworks. We worked on lifecycle and levels of service sections. And then at the end, we also collaborated with staff to develop the financial strategy and work closely with them to put together the financial analysis section. So the big difference that I can highlight, now given the time limitations today between an asset management strategy and an asset management plan is that the asset management strategy really is designed to address the underlying principles or business processes that are involved in developing your asset management program. And part of that would be, you know, producing an asset management plan or an asset management policy. So it really looks at a very, just, you know, the sort of the answer is in the title. It's really at the strategic level, whereas an AMP is really very asset focused. It's looking at the assets today, sort of a cross section of what's happening today, how your assets are performing today. Whereas a strategy looks at how you got there. So the AMP doesn't care how you got there. It's just a summary and analysis and recommendations of the existing data available. So a lot of steps were involved in developing the strategy. The key outcomes of the project at a high level is to improve Gray County's asset management program. And now, obviously, there's so many different moving parts in there. That's why the county decided to do an asset management strategy. You wouldn't find some of these results doing just an AMP. So I also wanted to commend the county in doing that. The strategy we're finding more and more across Canada is a growing deliverable. It's a growing document that municipalities are now developing. But there's, I would venture and say there's likely dozens of municipalities across Canada that are developing this. We worked with most of them in some capacity over the years. But Gray County is without question ahead of the curve in putting a document like this together and a really integral document. When we look at what improvements in an asset management program look like, we kind of, we can reduce it down to a few headline items. The better data and higher confidence is always number one for us because it is the foundation of asset management program development. As a result of that, you have improved forecasting and long-term planning. So you can have more confidence in the numbers that staff are putting together. And then as a result of that, you can get right down into the field level and individual asset and project level and have more confidence in the reasons that you're selecting a project as part of your tenure capital plan, as part of your approval processes. And then what goes into that is improved risk management, which we also worked with staff on developing. And then, of course, the most important one, which is why you're here, all the staff are here, is delivery of acceptable and also affordable levels of service for constituents. As a side benefit of this, even though it was top of mind for us, was compliance with the interior regulation, which I'm also sure you are quite familiar with. Now, of course, just a few weeks ago, there was an extension on the interior regulation 588 that mandates how municipalities are to report on asset management planning at the municipalities. And the first cut of that was due initially this, in a couple of months, in July 2021. And that was to cover your core assets, so your roads, bridges, water, wastewater, and storm assets, if that's in your portfolio. And the province also placed a substantial focus on levels of service, which is really important to do. And for the 2021 cut, the idea was to focus on current levels of service for your core assets. But that deadline has now been shifted by a year. And all the subsequent deadlines for all the deliverables have also been shifted by a year. So now the AMP officially will be due next July, July 2022. And then really the big one is the 2025 deadline, which was initially 2024. That's where the proposed levels of service challenge comes in for municipalities. And it's tricky for a number of different ways. One is just, of course, a lot of internal analysis and strategizing that will need to happen. But there's also an option, it's not mandated, but there's also the option and added complexity of incorporating constituent feedback into that. And we work with a number of municipalities on gaining feedback from constituents, specifically on asset management, not just infrastructure, but asset management. So that will add some complexity. And it seems like it's a long time away, but it'll come sooner than I think we all wanted to. So back to the project. How did we develop the asset management strategy? We divided into three pretty standard stages. So first one was a current state assessment, then we did visioning and refinement, and then the developing the actual strategy that we finalized about a month or so ago. In the current state assessment, and this really maybe highlights the differences between an asset management strategy and a plan. So in the current state assessment, we wanted to analyze and capture current asset management practices. What are staff doing? How are they doing it? And why are they doing it? An AMP doesn't do that. It's completely agnostic to those things. Then we did a detailed data gap analysis. We also identified business process gaps. Again, you would never see that in an asset management plan. What you would see is the outcome of those business processes gaps. So all the deficiencies, all the challenges with data, potentially the lack of confidence you may have in what you're seeing. Those are typically the results of processes and practices, and that's what the strategy partly designed to address. And then we also established current maturity levels. And in a couple of slides, I have a very high level summary of that report for you as well, because that was a starting point for us. The most important takeaway here for us was building a shared understanding of current practices. We've worked with too many municipalities now, and we know really well that that, you know, whatever is a priority at the S and P level or at the council level may not necessarily translate down into priorities at the field level. And similarly, you know, Department A may prioritize asset management, but Department B doesn't. Even within departments, you may have staff who believe the approach may be X, but, you know, half the staff believe the approach may be Y. And current state assessments are essential in getting everybody on the same page. You can build absolute consensus, but you can get most people looking in the same direction so that there is a rationale for why certain things, certain changes are being implemented. And that's critical for change management, as you know, I'm sure. From the current state assessment, we then went into visioning and refinement. This is again where significant input from staff was had. We had workshops with each of the departments. We shared our findings with them, make sure, again, we built consensus on current challenges, but also build consensus on what we were proposing at the time that would, sort of certain strategies and recommendations that would assist in the county improving its asset management program. And then, of course, we consolidated all of that and developed an actual strategy document that provides a path for the next few years for the county to improve its asset management program. And we did our best in discussion with staff to actually incorporate constraints, you know, including politics, including elections, potential policy changes, funding programs, all of those things as best as we could to make sure that if there are some great ideas and initiatives that we've recommended, they're not ignorant of all the challenges that staff might face and, of course, council might face in making those happen. So current state assessment findings. So this was a start of it all. We had a full day workshop, I believe, in November 2019, it seems forever ago. And we spoke with each of the departments. We had the pleasure of having Kim there as well. She provided some input on asset management practices and programs. And at the bottom, the x-axis you see there, those are, if you just look to the right of overall, so those, there are seven elements there. And over the years, based on our work with municipalities and also our own research and best practices research, we've sort of distilled asset management down into seven elements. And it's obviously a very big discipline, so doing that is a challenge. But it gives us enough structure to assess an organization's maturity as an asset management, as an implementer of asset management. And then we do a lot of analysis. We have a lot of discussions with staff. We do, as I mentioned, data gap analyses. We had a lengthy technical survey. So we take all of that, we analyze it, do a... So we take all of that, we analyze it, do a whole lot of work on spreadsheets. And then we sort of convert that into basic intermediate or advanced maturity levels. And the thing that stood out for us, and not because Gray County is unique in this, but just just because of the importance of these three areas here is what you find in that basic and basic to intermediate range. So if you look at the asset information element of asset management, we we found that staff had not as high a confidence in the data sets that we would like. So that wasn't a very important part for us for the rest of the project. And then similarly, on the risk management side, there was no formal and documented risk management processes in place. That doesn't mean risk management is not exercised by staff, it's exercised every day. But formalizing it, centralizing it and standardizing it is is really the next step of taking risk management and actually using it as a decision making tool. And then, of course, levels of service. And so again, basic levels of service framework, but no centralized way of tracking how infrastructure programs are being developed. None of this is unusual. And it's not unusual because for the most part municipalities, ever since asset management has been formally introduced in Ontario. It's been done, as you know, at the side of, you know, the desks in finance or the different departments have different approaches. So because of that, you can't really pay attention to all the systematic things that need to happen, such as risk frameworks of the service frameworks. And that's again, why having an asset management coordinator is really been essential. So these three things, these three areas were critical. There's areas that the county is performing really well. So overall, you're at sort of an intermediate borderline advanced. But there's certain, these three areas were were critical. And so what I showed you previously is just, you know, the basically the headlines that I could pull out from a pretty comprehensive current state assessment report. And then what we did is, in that report, we detailed each of these elements, where the deficiencies were, where the gaps were, how we felt the county could improve. And we use that as a basis to move on to the next step, which is actually developing the strategy. So many of the gaps, in fact, were addressed throughout last year and actually working with Amanda and and Trevor and Mary Lillman and Kevin. And we so we took care of a whole lot of those and including data refinement. So Amanda spent a significant amount of time on working with us on refining the county's infrastructure data sets. And so that there's continuity between the document that you receive and then the system that the county relies on. And there's, there should be more confidence now in the data sets. We developed risk and criticality frameworks. We so we, even if you took a post project audit, you would immediately be at a much higher stage of maturity than you were just over a year ago. And that's a substantial improvement. It's not an improvement you would typically see having done only an asset management plan. So state of the infrastructure. So we, I'm going to show some numbers to you on the county's asset portfolio. And this is a section, once again, that I'm sure you've seen many times now. So nothing here should be unusual. So a lot of numbers going on there. I think the big stuff here is the replacement cost as of twenty twenty. So this details how much the asset portfolio is worth. No surprise there, roads are, you know, about eight hundred and eighty six million. And in total, the portfolio is worth about one point four billion. The change that I wanted to highlight was the change from twenty sixteen. So twenty sixteen, the total was eight hundred and sixty six million of all of your asset portfolios worth as of that time. And it went all the way up to one point four billion, so about a five hundred and forty million dollar increase. Now, that doesn't mean there were five hundred and forty million dollars worth of assets that were acquired, constructed. The big change here was staff worked really hard on becoming, being much more precise about the replacement cost of roads. So we, the level of detail we have for roads, what goes into estimating the replacement cost of a road, I have not seen in any other asset management strategy or plan. So there was considerable discussion on what should be included to forecast how much a certain type of road, certain type of surface will cost to replace. So we have a much better, much more precise estimate of the county's roads portfolio. And that change in the roads, because there's a disproportionate large percentage of your asset portfolio that really had a dramatic impact on your total asset portfolio's valuation. Condition, so seventy nine percent of the assets are in fair or better condition. And this is across, this is a summary of the entire asset portfolio. We use a number of different ways to estimate that that condition, and I'm sure you're familiar with this as well. Age was used for some assets like buildings and facilities because the the building condition assessments are still forthcoming. And but for major assets like roads and bridges, or I should say, other major assets like roads, bridges and even fleet assets, we had actual field condition data available. So these these numbers should be fairly reliable. Reliable, however, the building condition assessments will have an impact on this pie chart. And typically, what we've seen is, depending on the the philosophical bend of the council, some councils focus on the good or the very good, others maybe focus on the pores and the very pores. And that's, that's okay, but I think what we try to emphasize is this is really where the focus should be because these are assets you can potentially prevent from falling into further disrepair. So I just wanted to highlight that as a as a tangent. Replacement needs. Now, there, you know, there's a great tenure capital forecast. What we like to do is go out much further than that because assets last such a long time. We like to provide a replacement horizon. So this shows how asset replacement needs will be increasing or decreasing and fluctuating over the next forty or fifty years. And I I do know that, you know, after twenty twenty five or twenty thirty, it does get a little bit more abstract. So the big takeaway here is not that in twenty forty one, twenty fifty, the county is going to need to spend six hundred fifty million dollars in that decade. But the big takeaway here is that to understand where replacement spikes might be. And then from there, what you can do is identify assets that may be candidates for further review. You may want to do condition assessments on assets as you get closer to these these peaks and spike, peaks and valleys to figure out where should we spend our our capital budget. And so, but you know, having that kind of thirty, forty year timeframe is is really important for long term planning. After this, we, using the condition, using all the inventory and data refinement work we did with staff, we then went into the financial sustainability section. And even as I'm speaking, and I, you know, I've done these presentations many times, it always seems like I'm accelerating through every slide. But it's, there were so many things that were happening in the project that it really was difficult to distill it down to just about half an hour or so. So I'll do my best to summarize the work on the remaining slides. So on the financial sustainability side, what we're really trying to do is say, can you afford to have the assets that you own and continue to provide services that constituents expect and can afford? That's really the idea of financial sustainability. It's a minimize reliance on borrowing, not that borrowing is necessarily or inherently a bad thing. It's a minimize reliance on external funding, not that that's a bad thing. But really, where can we find ways to rely more on our own source revenue and less and less on external sources? And there's also no industry, you know, mathematical formula that lets us know you must invest this percent every year based on the total value of your assets to make sure that you are meeting the needs of constituents. The the consensus in the industry typically falls between one and four percent of an asset's current replacement value. So if you've got, you know, if your assets are worth a hundred dollars and the recommendation is one percent, you should be setting aside a dollar for every hundred dollars every year to make sure that your infrastructure needs are met. We also used some external research. So we relied on the Canadian Infrastructure Report Card. And this was, I think, initially developed in twenty sixteen, and they've had a couple of more iterations of that since then. A new iteration is forthcoming of a fairly reliable document. And one of my colleagues, John Murray, is on the line. He was actually involved in the initial development of these benchmarks. And this was a, it is a joint project between many organizations, including FCM and the Canadian Society of Civil Engineers. So we use some of the guidance available in that document to inform our financial strategies. There's no surprise that, you know, municipalities continue to face significant challenges in meeting these benchmarks. But I'll show in a couple of slides or so how Gray County is actually a little bit, just just enough ahead of other municipal, other municipalities in this Canadian infrastructure report card sample. Still falling a little bit short on the recommended ranges of reinvestment rates, but ahead of other municipalities. So a lot of data on this, and I'll take it slow on this one because I think this is important. The the first thing I'll show you is that that blue shaded area. So that's the recommended range of how much you should invest based on the type of asset it is. So if for roads, the recommendation is you should be investing between two and three percent of your replacement cost every year to keep the infrastructure in a state of good repair. And there was no data available of machinery and equipment, so we rely on our own system generated reinvestment rates. And so same thing for bridges, culverts and buildings and social housing. So there's a recommended range there based on expert knowledge that that municipalities or really organizations in general should be investing in. The the X, the red X that you see here is the target reinvestment rate that we generate through our system, which the county uses for asset management purposes. And the pink dot there, that's how much Gray County is setting aside before we take into account any senior government transfers. So the interior community infrastructure fund, gas tax funding, any grants that may be available for use. And then the blue dot there represents what happens when we do incorporate that. So, you know, the the, for roads, for example, the reinvestment rate for Gray County jumps from point seven percent every year to one point two percent after we incorporate senior government funding. Now, as you see, it's below both our recommended target range of three point four percent and also the tranche that the Canadian Infrastructure Report Card recommends, which is about two point three percent. So a little bit of work to do there. And we see similar findings on other assets as well. There's some areas like buildings and facilities that, you know, on the surface may suggest that the county is investing more than it should. But the building condition assessments, I think, will reveal that perhaps the the funding needed is is higher than we're anticipating. The next graph looks a little bit similar, but this is where we plotted how Gray County compares to other municipalities in the Canadian Infrastructure Report Card sample. So the blue shaded area is just the same, it looks a little bit different just because of the the Y axis here, it's got a different maximum here. But same thing, so roads, you should be investing between two and three percent. How is Gray County doing? So Gray County, just like the last slide shows, is investing about one point two percent. So it's it's not in that recommended range yet, but it's higher than the municipal average, which is that red diamond there. And we see that consistently across all other asset classes. I would recommend ignoring these, machinery and equipment and vehicles are always outliers. They have relatively short time spans, but they're also very expensive, so numbers can be a little bit wonky there. But if you look at the the main assets here, you could see the blue dots is always higher than the red diamond, which is a good thing. But again, we want to get Gray County into that recommended reinvestment rate there. And that that was a foundation of how we move forward there, which is you you are spending a little bit higher than municipalities, but still falling short. And what that does is it creates what you have heard undoubtedly are are annual infrastructure deficits. So our goal was to close those annual deficits as best as as feasibly as possible. To do that, we looked at the funding that's currently available. So for each asset category, and this involved going through the 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 long term capital plan, the the capital forecast, and actually pulling out all the projects that are related to each of these asset categories. I didn't do any of that, Amanda did that, so that was a tough exercise. So we looked at how much tax revenue has been allocated to each of these asset categories over the last three years. And we use that as a foundation for estimating future spending efforts. And so on the left here, the seventy one point nine percent. So seventy two percent of your money that's going towards infrastructure is generated through taxes. There's another two percent or so that comes from disposal of assets, so any proceeds you might obtain. But I also wanted to emphasize, just as I did in the previous slides, there is reliance on senior government funding. That's not a surprise to you, but I did want to emphasize that, I think, about twenty four percent of the funding that's allocated to infrastructure comes from senior government funding. So that's there, you know, very, very essential source of funding there. So in total, when we look at it, across all asset categories, there's about twenty one point three million dollars that's allocated annually towards capital, capital works across all assets. But we, what we need for all the asset portfolio is about thirty two point eight million. And we determined that using those recommended reinvestment rates. So for roads, for example, the replacement cost is eight hundred and eighty six million. The recommended reinvestment rate is two percent using Canadian Infrastructure Report Card recommendations, which means we need about seventeen point seven million on an annual basis to keep the infrastructure in a state of good repair. And we apply the same formula for all other assets, asset categories, and compared the funding needed versus the funding available. And what we see is that for most asset categories, there's an annual deficit. There's a, and in total, it comes out to about eleven point five million annually that you're falling short on. There's a couple of asset categories that ostensibly show a surplus, as I mentioned before. But I think the and staff are confident as well that the building condition assessments are, will help refine the actual spending that's the actual investments that are needed to keep those assets, those essential assets in a state of good repair. So these numbers will change. Now, as I mentioned before, our goal is to eliminate this deficit. And we're not necessarily looking to provide the best and, you know, the the shiniest object all of the time, but really to provide levels of service to constituents that are feasible, but also affordable. And we wanted to rely primarily on taxation revenues that the county generates every year, but also incorporate some of the more permanent and predictable sources of funding, like the federal gas tax fund, the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund or OSIF, some long term care grants. And then we also want to make sure that we're being conservative in the useful life of an asset. So we're stretching it as much as we can to maximize the value we get from every dollar spent. That was also important. So what happens when we took a look at available funding every year? How much funding we actually need? And then how much money we have available to play around with? And that by playing around with, I mean, adjusting primarily the tax revenues that the county generates. So based on twenty nineteen numbers, we, the county had about five fifty eight point three million in taxation revenues. And what we need to close that annual infrastructure deficit is an additional eleven point five million, which means a about a twenty percent increase in taxation revenues. Now, based on those numbers, we decided to spread it out over, and we developed three scenarios. What happens if we spread it out over ten years, over fifteen years, over twenty years? How can we feasibly and affordably phase this funding in without putting too much burden on the constituents? And in discussion with staff, we we felt that the fifteen year range was the most feasible of the three. And and then it also provides continuity with the county's previous asset management plan. If you go beyond that, you certainly can. But I think what may end up happening is you may just end up deferring projects that should be completed. And then you're in that loop again, where you're only fixing the worst first. You're not having a chance to look at those assets that are in that fair condition, if you remember that pie chart. That's where you really, you can make a big difference. So this is our initial, our recommendation, going to council, or sorry, going to staff. And but that wasn't the end of it. So as if this was an asset management plan, it would end here. We would say this is it, and good luck. But this was an asset management strategy, and so it went beyond that. So the financial recommendation was only one section of the asset management plan. We developed four strategic priorities for the county. And the first one is the next three months. The second one is building that culture and capacity around asset management so that all the work that's being done, that has been done in the last year and before that can be maximized, so you can maintain that momentum and you're not starting at zero and then ramping up your efforts when something is due for reporting at, you know, to the province. You're actually maintaining your momentum in building your asset management program. The third one, essential one, is the enhancing data quality, so building on the work we've done with staff to date. And then the last one is adopting a customer centric view. And it just means reframing things a little bit to better understand what constituents want and what's actually affordable and how demands on infrastructure may be changing for many reasons, and COVID, of course, is one of them. And we developed twenty strategic recommendations. So these are kind of broad, big picture recommendations. And then within the data section side, we had nineteen additional recommendations that will help refine the risk frameworks, the levels of service frameworks, et cetera, et cetera. And all of these are based off of the current state assessment. The next three months, and this is probably going to be the quickest slide, is ensuring compliance. So even though the deadline's been pushed to next year, we, in a discussion with staff, with the exception of incorporating the building condition assessments and building the storm infrastructure inventory, there's really no reason. There's really no reason or need even to push the the project out or push the asset management plan out any further. You're from my estimation, this can be wrapped up in by the fall or at the latest by the end of the year. And then you don't have to worry about compliance for next year. And then again, as I mentioned, the other recommendation in the next three months, probably more urgent would be. The discussing the feasibility of incorporating a one point two one percent annual increase over the fifteen years. And I know the time is a little limited, so I've got a couple more slides, then I'll I'll stop talking and I can open up the questions. This is the make or break for us, they're building asset management culture and capacity. We've seen this over and over again, and I'm sure you have as well. Where there's sometimes lack of clarity on who's doing what, things get rushed. And it isn't because staff don't want to do things, it's because they have so many different things to do. So the big focus on building an asset management program really begins with that culture and capacity. It's the softer side of things, right, where which are just as important as the technical stuff. So what we recommended here is mapping forty six sort of high level asset management processes across different departments. Really trying to figure out who's doing what, when, how, who's got authority over what, so that people know who to turn to. And this really helps you maintain that structure, at least some rigidity to that structure. That you need to make sure that you are maximizing all the benefits that come from spending time and energy into building an asset management program. We also felt some cross departmental knowledge exchange, there's some really bright folks work at the county. And I think if we develop sort of cross departmental knowledge knowledge exchange opportunities. Where one department can learn from another department, that would go a long way as well. And including frontline staff is also something we recommend. It doesn't mean you're incorporating everybody in the field to come in and help you with strategic decisions. But if there are some star or some stars or some champions that you think really have intimate knowledge of assets and can provide that strategic overview. They we recommend actually incorporating field staff as well. Strategic priority number three is the enhancing the data quality side. Formalizing data management through frameworks is is essential. And I think that the county is large enough and has complex enough of a structure. That it can warrant developing formal data governance procedures and practices. This will really ensure that, you know, staff aren't rushing to develop good documentation. Because the the data is in so many different places and no one knows where it is and the quality of it, the integrity of it. Data governance frameworks really help make sure you minimize those challenges. And then because we conducted a gap analysis last year, we this is something we recommend that's done at least semi annually. And this really again helps make sure that as you have changes happening to your asset portfolio, they're captured as early as possible. So that again, you're not sifting through hundreds of different spreadsheets or files. Try to come up with, you know, the best data to use for whatever documentation you're developing at the time. And of course, continue to refine the inventory. So we built models into this, the county citywide software system, which is our system. On for risk and criticality for each asset class and even some of the asset types. But right now, those models for a number of attributes in that model, the information there is more of a placeholder. And the information is available at the county for some areas, for other blanks that we've left. They it may need to be acquired, so we do recommend continuing to put information in those models. So that when you do get assets identified as in high risk or medium rates, risk, you have more confidence in those outputs. And then the last one is identify the trends and influencers and how they may impact infrastructure services. So I I pulled some stats out from Gray County's website and also Stats Canada. So what I've seen is, you know, eleven thousand new residents by twenty thirty six. Now, the key question there is is who are the residents, you know, what's their makeup? What are the demographics? Because that's going to help you shape your infrastructure programs. Employment forecast is developed, expected to grow by three thousand. That's also going to have an impact on which infrastructure services are built. And depending on the type of industry that's, you know, most of this employment is going to comprise. And then the structure of the population, of course, will also impact services. Impact of COVID, I mean, we're in the midst of it, so it's it's really uncertain how things are going to shake out as far as infrastructure planning goes. But I'm just using myself as an example, I used to take Go Transit, which is the sort of the the regional rail network in Toronto and the GTA. I haven't taken the train in over a year. And you know, you can tell on the Gardner Expressway, there's much fewer cars, people aren't traveling to work. So all of these things are going to shape which infrastructure gets built and how your lifecycle programs change because people's demands change. And then the last thing is the adopting that customer centric view is really understanding public affordability. Now, I've seen many municipalities, including Gray County, do a really good job in being transparent around how each dollar is spent. So how much goes to EMS and police and infrastructure and operations? But I think what I would recommend is maybe having a slightly different perspective. So here, what I've done is just looked at the annual infrastructure needs that I shared earlier, based on the county's asset portfolio, which is. You know, thirty two point eight million dollars, this is what we need based on the recommended reinvestment rates every year. Then we looked at the number of households in Gray County, so about forty thousand. So if we split out these requirements across each household, that's about eight hundred and thirty dollars. Then we looked at the after tax income for households, because money, public money is public money, whether it's through a grant or utility rates or taxes. The public is paying for the same same stuff, or it's the same people who are paying for this, the same stuff. So what does that mean as a percentage of their income that they're bringing home? And for Gray County, that means about one point two percent. Now, the big question is, is this too high? Is it just right? And are constituents willing to maybe give up more for better services? The this is the key question going into twenty twenty five. For proposed levels of service, but also asset management planning in the municipal sector in general. This is this is a big, the big thing is, we want to provide really good services to constituents. But what does that mean at the end of the day to their take home pay? Can they afford to do it? And can they or can we lower certain levels of service in certain and certain service areas? Reallocate that to other areas that constituents may want more. So this is an area I think that Gray County can spend some some time and energy on. And it it will be essential in not just meeting the provincial regulation requirements. That's a, you know, incidental thing, that's an incidental benefit, I think. But I think really for long term planning and delivering really good quality service infrastructure programs. So with that, I'm going to stop my my lecture and leave it open for for any discussions.
Thank you very much, Is. And I know that you have Jordan and John with you. Is there anything that John and Jordan that you folks wanted to add? Or you'll just make yourselves available for questions then?
I could add one thing through you, Chair. Thanks very much, everybody. I think Is said it very, very well, Gray County's done such a good job of advancing asset management. And, you know, far ahead of of most of the municipalities in your area, let alone across Ontario. When we see the the figures on the infrastructure deficit, they can seem quite large. But you're certainly not in this alone, every single municipality in Canada has some form of infrastructure deficit, if not right across the Western world. And and everyone's trying to close the gap, so you made great strides already over the last number of years. We've seen the numbers the staff have showed us. And this report just puts you in the right position to carry on that that path forward. And the incremental increase over a number of years is probably the right thing to do, because. The infrastructure deficit didn't happen overnight, it took many decades to get here. So it will get some time to chip away at that to get back onto a sustainable path. And then over and above that, as we look at the numbers, Is raised some great things. You know, the trends and influences going forward, what what is the demographic of your population? Will climate adaptation to infrastructure change some of the numbers required? What will come out of the facilities, assessments, et cetera, et cetera? And 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 you know, how do we start to balance the the cost of the program? With the performance we can give to the public with the risk of reducing services in certain places? And that becomes a much more intelligent discussion on the level of service. As you move to that final piece on the regulation of two thousand and fifteen. I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty five. But with that, I'll stop there, stop there, I was just trying to summarize some of the things that Is said, but absolutely open to questions.
Thank you. And Jordan, anything to add? Good, okay, so I will turn next for questions, maybe I can start with one while I look for hands. Thank you, first of all, for pointing out the difference between the strategy and the plan, I think that was really important to to understand. But I know that you talked about the gap, and by the way, illuminating that the gap, I think is really important, because it's so easy to hide. In years of past, I think those days are going to be gone, we'll be able to to see those gaps. Now, you talked about addressing the gap over a fifteen year spread, which turned out to be one point one percent. But then when I saw the strategies, the first the first stage of a strategy in the first three months, it talked about looking for a tax. Increase, an increase to tax revenues of one point two one. So can you help me to understand the variance between the one point one over the fifteen year spread and the one point two one? I know it seems small, but.
Oh, no, no.
Different.
Right, thank you, Ms. Warden, I think it may just be. Misinterpretation, let me just put the slide up there, it should have said one point two one percent for both. So.
That's what I would have thought, but when you did see the fifteen year spread, it had, I I thought that I saw one point one.
Okay, yes, yes, I'll pull that up, so the one point one, give me one second, Ms. Warden. So the one point one is from twenty sixteen. So if we look at the asset management plan twenty sixteen, that's what the plan at the time recommended. Now, we're saying one point two one, so a slight increase. But again, the changes, the dramatic changes in the replacement cost of roads would explain this. So we actually did a scenario before we finalized a strategy where we looked at. If we apply the same methodology for estimating replacement costs this year, what would that change look like? And that was less than one percent, so when we applied the new replacement costing, that brought the increase up to one point two one percent.
Thank you for that. Okay, Council, if I could see the full screen again. I could then see hands, Council, so I'm ready to see your, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Warden, yeah, on that same slide, you know, it says for twenty nineteen, there's an effective tax increase. That would be required of nineteen point eight. And I recognize if you you spread that over fifteen years, then you know, you you just increase it a little bit each year. But since you haven't increased it immediately, doesn't your deficit grow bigger over time? So how does the model account for that in that? You know, when you start off with only one point one or one point two one, sorry. You know, you're not, you're just, the hole is getting deeper and you know, you're not keeping up. So it is this some kind of a time related thing?
Thank you, and through you, Ms. Warden, yes, Counselor, the the challenge with the reports like this is. They they rely on data at a given time. So if the data changes now, if in the even in the span between us developing the first draft. And bringing it to council, if there's new assets that have been required, acquired or constructed, those are not part of the plan, right? So yeah, the the hole does get deeper, unfortunately, it's like the ticking clock of debt that we see in the United States, it's the same way. So you know, if the the plan was finalized for twenty twenty one. If we delayed by a year, the hole gets deeper, correct? So I think the plan emphasized or estimated that by, you know, twenty thirty six, you will close your annual deficits. Maybe that might mean it's twenty thirty seven, but the relationship is not necessarily linear like that. So it'll really depend on the the level of new assets that have been acquired.
And and that was my concern is that if the model is linear, then you know, that number is probably underestimated in that. You know, if it takes you fifteen years to get to the full financing of the plan during those fifteen years. You know, obviously, the the rate of growth gets smaller and smaller, the closer you get to that target. But at least initially, like it's like an NPV calculation. You delay the year and you know, the net present value change is huge.
Correct, correct. And and I think that's where anywhere, I'm I'm sorry, Ms. Warden, I think anytime you can have an injection of capital that's that's feasible. That you can afford to do to jumpstart that curve is is always beneficial.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, so ever, next is Counselor Potter.
Thank you, Warden, to the consultants. Your crystal ball probably isn't any better than ours, but we are all seeing increased costs. In in construction and so on. What assumptions did you make, if any? And what recommendations do you have in dealing with those changes? We're going to see changes in demographics and and so on, we know that. But this is one that is proving to be really difficult to deal with, because we have no idea. What where it will settle and how long it will last, you know, and and if it'll ever come down again. So do you have any any built in? Recommendations for that and what assumptions did you make in terms of your numbers?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Warden. So the assumptions we made in estimating the current portfolio, valuations, forecasted replacement needs. They all rely on how an asset, a like for like asset would be rebuilt, reconstructed or reacquired. It, as you said very correctly, that our crystal ball and how technology and construction methods and material sciences are going to change. Is likely no better than yours. And the asset management, the limitations in even a document as comprehensive as this, a project as comprehensive as this. Is it has to rely on a baseline data. And we can't really incorporate potentials and potentialities for technological change. But we rely on staff to let us know what note, what sort of numbers they're seeing in recent tendering documents, recent contracts. Because those numbers implicitly will reflect the best available technology today. The all the efficiencies that are potential today. So it doesn't incorporate future developments, but it does incorporate as best as possible the the advancements as of today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Potter, next is Counselor DeSai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So my question is with regards to the condition of the assets. As we've seen, seventy nine percent of our assets are fair or better condition. What is the the average, I guess, on that on that percentage across across Ontario municipalities?
Good question, I wouldn't, I think we do have some data based on just our clients. The only thing I can refer you to would be the Canadian Infrastructure Report Card. And they provide a great summary of municipal organizations. And I think they actually incorporate other public sector entities as well. I'm happy to send a link to Amanda with their current iteration. And they actually provide a breakdown by asset class and even asset type, so any infrastructure that may be useful. I think that that would be very beneficial as a reference.
Thank you very much for that answer, thank you very much, Mr. Warden, the other questions I had were have been asked, thank you.
Thank you, sir, next is Counselor Keating.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Mr. on that for your presentation. I wonder if I could ask you again about your recommendation to focus on assets that are in a fair condition. In our own municipality, we adopted the philosophy of keeping the good roads good. And after five years of doing so, have recognized that in the bad roads, it's really, really bad. So I just wondered if you could expand a little bit on your recommendation to focus on on the fair side of things.
And thank you, and through you, Ms. Warden, yeah, so the council, the the recommendation is not necessarily an either or. It's just that when we've seen municipalities focus primarily on bringing their poor or very poor assets back to a state of good repair. They miss the opportunity in assets that are fair, so that are just on the verge of falling into further disrepair. That's really where the window is, the optimal window is for you to save some money in the long term. Once you get into the poor and very poor, it just gets more and more expensive to rehabilitate and replace and reconstruct assets. So if you can find that window in that fair range, you can likely save some money as far as your lifecycle programs are concerned. Now, that doesn't mean that you shouldn't keep your good roads in, you know, at that good level. If that is the target that you've established. if that is the target that you've established. And if that is a target that reflects constituent expectations, we've, to us, it's more economizing the amount of money that's available. And really, when you're targeting that fair or assets, when you look at the risk-side assets that are in that medium-risk category, really, that's where you can begin to economize a little bit better.
Okay. Councillor Keating, you're good. Thank you. Next is councillor Thomas.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, through you. You know, I I'm a relative newcomer to politics, only being a councillor for seven years. But I can't say that there's there's much I've heard more about in that time than the infrastructure gap. At every single conference that you attend, Good Roads or AMO, it doesn't matter. The infrastructure gap is first and foremost on everybody's minds. But from my perspective, the key issue is actually political will. It's great to know what we need, and I think probably most of us already know what we need, but it really just comes down to political will. You know, in sound, a motion was made long before I got on council to set aside one percent a year to go towards infrastructure. And I don't believe we've quite hit that yet. And it is a struggle every year to justify getting there. So and there is a question coming, I promise. So I I guess, you know, you you made the comment that best practices, one to four percent of an asset's current replacement value should be set aside every year. In your experience, and you did also make a side comment that municipalities struggle to reach that. And I'd just like to know, in your experience, who is reaching that goal, if anyone? And if so, how did they get past that whole question of the political will?
Thank you for that question, and through you, Mr. Warden. And I'm going to put my my colleague John Murray on the spot here. If if I'm being completely blunt and completely undiplomatic, I would say it would be rare to find a municipality that's ticking all the boxes and investing one to four percent or whatever the recommended range is across their asset classes. What we typically see is a disproportionate focus on, let's say, transportation service areas. That's usually the trend. Now, my colleague, my my manager, John Murray, used to work at the city of Hamilton for a while. And I I think they were probably as close as you can come to being leaders in the industry. So maybe I'll be quiet for a couple of minutes and and let John provide some insight on that.
Thank you, Is, and through you, Mr. Warden. No, it's a it's a great question. I think in in my Hamilton days, we we actually did the first ever state of the infrastructure report of any Canadian municipality. Surprisingly, I'm I'm the guy with the gray hair now. And so it was it was a long awareness and communication protocol year upon year with the annual capital budget deliberation sessions to council, similar to today. And but since then, through FCM's programs, Canadian Network of Asset Management Management, I used to be the chair of that association, actually. There's more and more awareness across the country. There's more and more municipalities doing asset management plans. PSD, we've done over two hundred and fifty to date. And it used to be a struggle. You used to go to a council session, and the gap was a kind of a shock kind of event. Now it's more accepted, and now there's more action being taken by councils right across the country. And we're starting to see a lot more strides forward to closing that gap, and it's more of an accepted practice. But I totally agree with this, that not everybody's checked all the boxes yet. I can't think of anyone perfect municipality. But everyone's taking the right steps for what I think would be the best answer, unless you want to elaborate any further.
No, no, John, I I think I think you're you're right there.
Okay, councillor Brooney.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I wondered maybe if the consultants could ask the question to me. In all your wisdom and so on, have you kept up with the technology changes, different construction methods and so on and so forth that are happening and changing every single year? Have you incorporated that in your estimates and so on for the future?
Thank you for the question, and through you, Mr. Warden. So, sir, as I mentioned earlier, we, the the, any changes or advancements in either technology, material sciences, or improved managerial efficiencies in how projects are completed, they are reflected, they should be reflected in the costing estimates that we receive from clients, so from Gray County. So when we worked with the roads department, for example, or transportation services, the estimates that they provided for how much, for example, a, you know, an urban surface would cost to reconstruct today, with today's standards, those reflect the best available technology and the best available data. So we don't explicitly incorporate them into our modeling, but they are incorporated implicitly.
Okay, I do not see any other hands. And so with that said, I'm going to thank Is and John and Jordan for a very good delegation. I'm going to ask you to hang tight because we're going to move in next to item six B. Amanda, you'll be on deck to present your asset management strategy, asset management strategy, not the plan, the strategy. Report is being moved by councillor Gamble and seconded by councillor Robinson. Amanda, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So as I mentioned, my report was really to provide some more background, summarize, and then ask for approval on the proposed strategy and for your support and staff moving forward with the many recommendations that were made in the strategy. So as I'm sure you're aware, from your own local municipalities, asset management is an ongoing and important practice for all municipalities that ensures that public infrastructure is managed in the most beneficial way to provide the optimal level of service to users while minimizing the associated risks and costs. It's essentially doing the right thing to the right asset at the right time. As Is mentioned, Gray County has an asset portfolio with an overall estimated current replacement cost of over one point four billion dollars, with sixty-three percent of that being the road network. Seventy-nine percent of the assets are currently in fair or better condition. And like most municipalities, as we discussed, there is the current infrastructure funding gap between the available and the ideal level of funding for assets, which we're working to overcome. It's important to remember that this is a continuous process, and factors and variables change each and every day that the county is operating. Our inputs and data are constantly evolving. But I strongly believe that the strategy that was presented to you today is based upon the best information that's available at this point in time. With each iteration of the county's asset management plan that will be prepared going forward, the data will be continuously refined, creating a more and more accurate plan upon which future strategic infrastructure decisions can be made. I'd like to acknowledge and thank all my fellow county staff members from asset managing departments that contributed to the completion of this strategy and PSD, of course, for all their hard work and extra guidance throughout the project. I really think that a lot of progress has been made throughout the process of developing this current strategy document. And I think we now have a strong foundation to keep building the county's asset management practices upon into the future. This strategy is a significant milestone in our asset management journey because asset management is definitely a journey, not just a destination. Olivia from the Communications Department has actually helped me to develop a short intro video for asset management that's for the public. I'm hoping maybe Rob is able to help me share that with you now. Otherwise, I know Is provided a large amount of information within his presentation. So I'll leave it at that for now, and thank you very much for your time. And I'm happy to take any questions after the video.
Thank you, Amanda.
Gray County, let's talk. What is asset management? Did you know Gray County manages and maintains more than one point four billion dollars in publicly-owned assets? This includes eight hundred and sixty-nine kilometers of roads and the connected stormwater networks, seventy-seven kilometers of recreational rail trails, eight thousand five hundred acres of forests, nine hundred ninety-seven housing units, eight paramedic bases, four transportation depots, three long-term care homes, county administration offices, and the provincial offenses court, as well as a wide variety of machinery, snowplows, equipment, and other vehicles used across county operations. These assets are critical in offering the many services that are essential to Gray County residents and visitors. Did you know Ontario municipalities own sixty percent of all public infrastructure but receive only nine percent of every tax dollar? Municipalities across Canada are now experiencing an infrastructure gap, meaning the optimal amount of funding needed for infrastructure assets exceeds the funding available. Like other municipalities, much of our infrastructure in Gray County was built decades ago and is now reaching the end of its useful life. Additionally, our assets are vulnerable to climate change and are being damaged by more frequent and severe storms. Our infrastructure was not originally designed with these impacts in mind. Now, Gray County is faced with tough decisions about what to replace and how soon. Will it be more expensive if we delay new projects? Do we increase tax rates to pay for repairs and replacements? Do we reduce service levels to keep taxes lower? What are the risks of lowering the level of service provided? And how much should we be contributing to reserves? While we are busy making those decisions, our region continues to see growth, putting more demand on existing and new county services. Gray County's asset management strategy and plans can help guide those important decisions. Simply defined, asset management is doing the right thing to the right asset at the right time. In our asset management strategy and plans, our assets are listed and assigned a condition rating, giving an estimated replacement cost and remaining lifespan based on the best information available at that point in time. This data allows us to consider the entire Gray County asset portfolio and identify priorities. As we can see, asset management is an ongoing process. It helps us to make informed strategic decisions so we can predict when assets will need to be fixed or replaced, maintain healthy reserve levels, keep our budget sustainable, avoid unexpected asset failures, and make the best long-term plan for the brightest future of Gray County. For more information about Gray County services, please visit gray.ca. Gray County, color your way.
So there we go. So Amanda, apparently, you're not just talented at asset management, but you're also into movie productions.
Can't take full credit, that was communications.
Well done. Okay, so I think it's council's turn now. Council, are there any questions that you have with respect to this report? Councillor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So just a quick question with regards to the recommended one point two one percent. In 2016, one percent was recommended. And to the best of my knowledge, we have put away the one percent since then. Nonetheless, we're seeing an increase to what's being recommended in order to avoid or to maybe plan for an increase in the future and to soften the effect of that. Should we be looking at putting away more than one point two one percent today? Is my first question. My second question is, with the, we we, with the transfers, the transfers that we make to the asset management reserve, do they cover off the annual amortizations on on our assets? Thank you.
So through you, Mr. Warden. Well, generally speaking, amortization isn't the recommended level of funding that you should be putting towards your assets just because it's, you know, based upon financial financial calculations and, you know, the historical cost of the asset. So what we're recommending here is based more on the replacement cost of those assets. So that's the inflated value of those historical costs and considering any additional costs. So I would say that we are covering the amortization, but I haven't actually done that math to confirm. I'm sorry, I forgot your first question.
Or sorry, thank you for that answer. My first question was, in 2016, one percent was recommended. We've put away one percent every year, and we're still seeing a, well, we're being asked to increase that by twenty percent, give or take. So should we be putting away more now so that we can soften the impact in the future when we do another asset management plan? And it it could come back higher. So should we, should we put away more than one point two one percent today?
So I do see Is's hand up. Maybe I'll let him offer his wisdom on that.
Thanks, Amanda, and through you, Ms. Warden. Yes, so the recommended increase is some science, math, and some art. So it is a function of not just what the hard numbers are telling you, what the business cases are telling you. It's also a function of your own appetite as a council and as a as a community. So that's where I think that, not that it's mandated or required, but I think increasingly, we're seeing municipalities directly engage constituents, not, again, on infrastructure, but asset management itself and what it means to not have anything for free. You know, things cost money to deliver. I think having those conversations with, potentially with constituents, and even some of the the lower-tier municipalities and how the different infrastructure, you know, intersects, I think those things are essential in actually coming up with the the right number. I could say if you had in nine, if you can increase your revenues by nineteen point eight percent today, please go ahead and do that. And but, you know, there's, I doubt you have the appetite for that, and I I don't think the constituents will be happy. So I think you answered your question. It's a combination of what's affordable at the community, the political willpower, and what the numbers are saying. So it's a multifaceted approach.
So Is, it looks like you've upset Mary Lou because I see her hand up now. Mary Lou, go ahead. You're still muted, Mary Lou.
No, Is has never upset me. I actually had sent his, one of his bosses, a message during the presentation saying, I'm maybe a little bit of a geek, but I could listen to Is all day. I was going to respond to councillor Desai and just say that annually, we do bring a report to council showing that we are in compliance with OREG 28409, which talks about, because we don't budget for amortization, post-employment benefits, we don't have landfill, but that's another example, that we are at least spending an amount equivalent to the annual amortization. And yes, we do exceed that amount. So between whether we've put it to reserve or whether we've done capital work this year or because of COVID, we delayed work and we had to transfer money to reserve, we are spending that money.
Thank you. Can I say any other, sorry?
The other thing I was going to say, and just to further what Amanda was speaking on, if we only put away the amount equivalent to annual amortization, that wouldn't be a good thing because you could have a, an asset that was built fifty years ago. We're amortizing it, and it won't cover the future replacement cost. We also could have assets, I'll use the example of this building. Prior to the renovation, the the original building was fully amortized. We had a fifty-year life on it. So we wouldn't have been putting any money away if we hadn't done a renovation. And on the flip side, you could have a municipality that is putting money that has amortization for assets that they will never replace. And I'll go back to perhaps some of our member municipalities that have multiple arenas. And at some point, they will not be able to replace all of them, and they really exist because of amalgamation. And that's a tough decision for those municipalities because, of course, their constituents always want the service available closest to them that has always existed.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Councillor Desai.
Thank you. Mary Lee sure knows the the sore spots with with the rural municipalities. My my other, my my next question, and it's come up because Is mentioned the crazy recommendation of nineteen point eight percent this year. So with with full funding, I know it's a theoretical space, right? If you if you can call it that. If we did do nineteen point eight percent this year, what then? We were fully funded. Do we do we do another asset management plan? Or what happens at that point? Thank you.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, you, you could, we would love for you to do another asset management plan. So what, what happens when you have nineteen point eight percent and you're bringing in eleven point five million dollars tomorrow? What happens is you have enough money to meet your annual infrastructure needs. You may have an existing backlog. So that backlog is, will be left as is. It just means that the backlog won't grow because you're meeting your minimum annual infrastructure needs. So what you can then begin doing in this awesome world of, that you've brought us into, is you can then start tackling some of the backlog. So some of the deferred maintenance needs, investments that you should have made that have accumulated, you can defer that to, to the backlog. And that's if you really, really want to spend all the money. You could save, you could put some into reserves, you know, figure out how your constituents, your demographics are evolving. And or hey, if you want to have beautiful roads all the time and keep everything shiny, and that's what your constituents want and want, willing to pay for it, awesome, great, I would, I would move tomorrow to Gray County.
Is that it? Counselor Desai?
That's it. That was a little disheartening to hear that we would, we would still have a backlog. I wish I hadn't asked the question. Ignorance truly is bliss. Thank you very much for that answer. That's thank you, thank you, Mr. Warden.
The awesome world of Counselor Desai has a nice ring, doesn't it? Okay, I think that's it for questions.
No, Counselor Mellon.
Counselor Mellon, my apologies.
Not a problem. I'm very patient over here, and I'm surprised that Counselor Desai doesn't know what good roads look like. If you just come a little further south, he'd know. But anyway, to Counselor Thomas's point, I'm not so certain that the challenge really is the size of any particular body parts of counselors. But I would suggest the challenge really is making the community understand the magnitude of the issue. You know, politicians are politicians and they do the bidding of the community. And if the community doesn't understand asset management, they're never going to ask for the level of service and the quality of the assets that we truly should be funding. So I, I watched Amanda's movie or presentation there, and I thought, we need more of that. To my mind, that's the first, the first investment, is to have more of that to make our communities truly understand the challenges that we face as a community. And then they'll be begging us to invest more of their tax dollars in those assets. So again, Counselor Desai, if you're not understanding that, come on down to Southgate and we'll show you how it's done.
Resist, resist, Counselor Desai. Okay, do you truly have a question?
I do, I do truly have a question.
Okay.
Thank you. It is a bit of a response to Counselor Mellon, but it's nothing to do with the roads in Southgate or Gray Highlands. We all know which ones are better. But I, I think it goes beyond public knowledge. At a certain point, as counselors, we do have to take a stand. And this is a philosophical argument at this point, so I won't belabor it. But we do have to be, be in a position where we make the decision that's right for the municipality. Whether it be Gray County or, or lower tier municipalities, you have to make the decision that's right for that municipality rather than the decision that's being called for from the public because we are privileged to more information than the public is. In fact, I'd argue we're, we're privileged to a lot more information. So I guess that's, that's the thing is the public will, will, will see the video and different people will have different conclusions from it. Some will say, well, we need a lower level of service then, and some will say, well, we need more investment. But as a body of eighteen people, we have to be able to make the decision of what's better for the future of, of our municipality. And so I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you very much. Okay, I see no other hands and therefore seeing no motion from Counselor Desai for the nineteen percent, we'll deal with the motion that's before us. So I'm going to call the question. Is there anyone opposed to the motion to receive the strategy and to approve it as presented? And seeing none, that is carried. So once again, thank you, Iz and John and Jordan for your delegation. Appreciate your time and your work. And Amanda, awesome job. And when we hear the consultants say that you're giving them a hard time, we love that.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so council, we now need to take a bit of a step back and go to item number four and frankly, five, the consent agenda. I'm going to suggest that we deal with the consent agenda and then take a short break. So can we go back to the consent agenda? Does anyone have any items that need to be pulled? That's item five, A through E. I do not see any hands. So seeing none, I'm going to suggest then that, excuse me, moved by Counselor Patterson and seconded by Counselor Robinson, that we approve the consent agenda. Is there anyone opposed to that motion? And seeing none, it is carried. Okay. So I'm going to suggest we take a break and come back at two o'clock, and we'll continue with the agenda. There we go. I think that we have quorum. Just about. All right, yeah. There we go. Definitely have quorum now. Okay, council, we are now dealing with item six C, which is the local immigration partnership, excuse me, partnership strategy. We have Melissa on deck. It is being moved by Counselor Burley and seconded by Counselor Robinson. Melissa, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Warden Hicks County Council. I'm happy to be here today to provide you an update on the Gray Bruce Local Immigration Partnership. I believe we last connected in October. So I am looking forward to providing you an update as to some of the accomplishments that we've seen over the last six months. So as you know, in February twenty twenty, Immigration, Refugees and Citizenship Canada approved the Gray Bruce Local Immigration Partnership. And this funding was approved for five years to support the development of community-based partnerships and planning to support the unique needs of newcomers. Recognizing that successful settlement needs to happen at scale, the purpose of the LIPS are to connect various stakeholders to improve coordination of services to facilitate immigrant settlement and integration. And so these community-based partnerships focus on four key areas. So those key areas include supporting community-based knowledge sharing and local strategic planning, improving the coordination of services, raising awareness of benefits of immigration and the needs of newcomers, as well as fostering welcoming and inclusive communities. So since its launch in July of twenty twenty, the Gray Bruce Local Immigration Partnership has established an inclusive partnership. We currently are comprised of over fifty members from community organizations and various community stakeholders, and this represents forty-two organizations from Gray and Bruce. The intention is that these community organizations and stakeholders will meet regularly, and this will help to develop that coordinated and comprehensive approach to strategic planning. We've also launched a brand and key messaging toolkit, as well as developed the draft settlement strategy, which is presented here today in the report that was provided to you. So just to give you a bit of a background, the settlement strategy was developed through a six-month process, which was facilitated by Louise Pizarro Coaching and Consulting. The process to develop the strategy included a comprehensive document review. In order to do this document review, there were, there were many pieces of local data, reports and studies, along with a review of past and present initiatives that have taken place over the last several years, many of which you're probably familiar with, including the Nuted Gray Initiative and some other short-term pilot projects that have taken place in the community. It also included multiple conversations with community members, stakeholders and partnership council members as detailed in the report. But to give you a bit of a further idea, so it really included facilitated sessions with, again, not only the partnership council members, which represent forty-two different organizations and additional stakeholders, but also included consultation with newcomers, government representatives, education partners, employment services, service, sorry, settlement service providers, social services, health sector partners, community organizations and employers. So it was a quite, a quite comprehensive group of individuals that were engaged in these consultations. There were also several review sessions of the information that was gathered along the way with both staff and stakeholders. So through this process and the research that was conducted and the stakeholder engagement process, seven key community priorities were identified, which you will note in the report. So just to review them briefly, the first two really focused on coordination and collaboration and the need for community organizations to coordinate so that from there, organizations can collaborate to achieve transformative change. It's really exciting that we've already seen some of this take place with the partnership council meetings that have begun, having those connections start to be made at the partnership council table and relationships start to build and conversations start to happen from that. and conversations start to happen from that coordinating and connecting partnership council group. That's been a really interesting and exciting thing to see happen, just even in the past six months. It was also identified the need for building the capacity of leaders across all sectors from the Grand Bruce regions. The need for employment that is meaningful, recognizes credentials, supports workplace integration and inclusion, and addresses racism and discrimination in the workplace. The need to support not only the economic integration of newcomers, but also the social integration by fostering social capital and creating opportunities for social connections. So really the focus on not just attracting, but also retaining. The need for adequate and affordable housing, as well as the need to address racism, combat discrimination, and raise awareness about the value of cultural diversity. So from here, it's recommended that these seven key priority, community priorities are actionable objectives framed through four pillars to move the work of the partnership forward. And so you'll see below the seven priorities, there are these four pillars which are identified. So just to review pillar one focuses on building capacity, and this addresses the first three priorities, which are coordination, collaboration, and leadership. This pillar focuses on bringing together all partners, newcomers, settlement partners, employers, and other relevant stakeholders to create a coordinated and collaborative approach to the settlement and integration of newcomers, as well as building the capacity of our community leaders. We have pillar two, which focuses on strengthening community and addresses the community priority regarding social connection and capital. And so this pillar will focus on initiatives that connects newcomers and community partners, not only to the resources and information that they require, but also to support ways to increase newcomer social capital and social connections. Pillar three is cultivate prosperity, and this has a focus around the community priority of economic integration. So this focuses on investing in a strengths-based approach, co-creating and promoting initiatives that cultivate the rich diversity of newcomer skills and talents. And then pillar four is fostering inclusion. And so this pillar is really focused around fostering inclusion by working in collaboration with our partners to eliminate barriers, as well as address racism, combat discrimination, and raise awareness about the value of cultural diversity in Grand Bruce. So just in closing, the Gray Bruce Local Immigration Partnership Strategy 2025 is a beginning, and it sets the stage for co-creating a prosperous and welcoming great groups where everybody belongs, moving beyond settlement to inclusion. Members of the partnership council will work collectively to identify, select, and implement activities that address these community priorities ongoing, and in order to achieve positive cumulative, cumulative impact through that collaboration. This will be accomplished through the partnership council, identifying actionable items, both short-term, midterm, and long-term. And this action planning will need to remain flexible as environments change. Going forward.
Yeah.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Very good job. Very good job.
Thank you.
See hands up already. So we'll start with councillor Boddy.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. This is a good report. It's good to see coming and good to see lots of work going into that. And I think it's obviously it's going to benefit all of us in the coming years as, you know, it's important stuff. Just a question. So there's going to be an ongoing partnership council. And I note that welcoming communities Gray Bruce has been active in this. Are they part of that council?
Yes, we absolutely have a representation from them on our partnership council.
Interesting. I find it interesting that it's, I think some people fail to understand that Gray County involves all the lower tiers because we've been receiving communications from the chair. It's David something, can't remember, Morris or something like that, that seems to indicate that we're not doing anything at the city level. And I just don't know how he doesn't understand or, you know, where the communication breaks down when we're doing this through the county. And it's very much supported by all the lower tiers and, and is so important that we do this together, not as individual lower tiers, because we can accomplish so much more together. So I, I hope if you get the opportunity, you can explain that, you know, all nine lower tiers are certainly part of the county and involved in this. And we're not likely to break off and do things on our own, although we're certainly going to do everything we can, I think, from our point of view, to adopt what Gray County does here moving forward. Those are just my thoughts. Thank you.
Anything to add to that, Melissa? Okay, then I can't see Melissa. She may be on a different screen here. Oh, there you are. Okay, next is Madam CIO.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I just really wanted to recognize both Melissa for her work and Jacinda, who's also on the call here. This kind of, of work in rural communities is still quite rare. And I think one of the things that we've learned out of all of our experiences with COVID and responding to situations is that our, our strength and our, I guess, our superpower, I will say, is in working together and working across. So just to follow on with councillor Boddy, you're so right that, you know, we can do a lot to make it a real difference to the health and vitality of our communities and to the experience that new people come, have when they come here. And whether you came from two municipalities over, or you came from the other side of the world, the benefits that come out of this work, I think, will stand us in, in really good stead. So I hope that all of council feels really proud of this work. I'm proud of the contributions that you're making and the fact that we're doing this together with Bruce County in a collaborative way as well. So thank you, Melissa. You had to hit the ground running and you've done a great job.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, I do not see other hands, Madam Clerk. Oh, I do. Councillor decide.
And I wondered, I wondered, Mr. Warden, if Jacinda, I thought I saw her waving her hand. I wonder if she had some comments at the end, perhaps.
Okay. Yes, for you, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to address Mayor Boddy's comment. And I have to say that David Morris is a very active and strong advocate for the newcomer population in, in the region. This is a collaborative initiative and working together with some of the issues are going to be key to the success of the partner council. But also within that, you're going to have individual leaders. And I think Owen Sound, being a larger population center, and where a number of newcomers will come, I think that there was, there was gonna not need to be more, more, even more efforts being made because a lot of the newcomers are moving to Owen Sound. So if we can build that welcoming community through different pockets and work together and bring in some of those issues, like Mayor Boddy had mentioned, some of the issues that, that arise to the table to partner council, so that it is a coordinated collaborative effort to adjust the issues and the unique needs of our newcomers. I think that's, we'll continue to do so. And I think that's still really important. So thank you, Mayor Boddy, for mentioning that.
Thank you, Jacinda. Next is councillor decide.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. And I just wanted to reiterate as well that there's a lot of good work being done at the local immigration partnership. I, I've had the privilege and the honor of being able to partake in the meetings as, as a representative of Gray Island. And, and there's a lot of good work happening at that level. And, and it's, it's important that we support that work going forward. Thank you very much, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, sir. I do not see other hands, Madam Clerk. So with that said, I'm going to thank Melissa. Excellent job, by the way. Did a great job. Smile. It's all over now. And Jacinda, thank you very much. Always good to see you. And I will call the question before us. Is there anyone opposed to the motion to receive the strategy and to proceed with, I guess, an action plan by the partnership? Anyone opposed? Seeing none. I will say that that is Carrie. Thank you very much. Okay, we are on to item six D now. We're dealing with Gray County urban road and connecting link options. Pat is on deck. This item is being moved by councillor Mill and seconded by councillor Keveney. Pat?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ward. Can you hear me okay?
Perfectly, sir.
Okay, let me try to share my screen here. Can everyone see that? Okay, okay, thank you. First thing I wanted to say, I just want to apologize. I have no animated video. I'm adding Amanda to my list of people not to follow up council, which is getting kind of large, to be honest. So yeah, this is regarding the urban road options. As you can see, it was supposed to be report number one of 2021, but there's been some delays. We've been working hard on it here. But let me move us forward here. This is just an outline of what we're going to do. So I'm going to talk about the purpose and the background, as this is, is stuff that came out of the transportation master plan, some of our options with connecting, connecting links or urban roads, what we can do, list of what they are, some of our challenges and some of our next steps. So it's fairly lengthy. I'll try to go as quick as you can. There's been a lot of heavy lifting here today, I see. And I don't know if, if it's easier to do questions as we go. Buck, I can see you in the, in the window and Heather. And if you want to stop me, then just let me know. And you can ask questions as we go. That works for me, too. This is my first time on the headset, so I'm a little, I'm a little off. So let's try here. So this is the background that came of transportation master plan. So when the, when the master plan was finalized, there was certain issues that were generally too big or, or too lengthy to be resolved right in the master plan. So one of them, transit, of course, there's been lots of work on the transit front. As you know, you know, we've, we've got transit going, which we didn't have when it started. And for those that remember this, this kind of finalized in 2015, the master plan. So it's been quite a while. Active transportation, we've done the cycling and trails master plan, the pay shoulder policy, active transportation's become a really big focus. And I think we're doing as good a job as anybody in, in trying to get that moving forward. The, the big three, the road rationalization, it was just, I think, at the time, you know, it, it suggested quite a bit of downloading. It just was probably not palatable at that time, or maybe at any time. I'll talk about that in a bit later, too. The connecting links and the bridge rationalization, I'll talk about a bunch today. As far as the goods movement and some of the rationalization, we have gone forward and planning in the OP covered off a lot of these issues as well. As far as a functional classification and a hierarchy that's been established of our roads, other strategies, the road exchanges, I'll talk about a little bit today as well. So this is really the purpose of the report today, identifying options for our urban roads, the advantages and disadvantages of each, receive counsel direction of the next steps of urban roads, and ultimately ensure urban roads are managed by the proper level of government. So I just wanted to say something because I was quite involved with that committee at the time. And really, that third point is, is what the master plan, the transportation master plan committee was trying to accomplish. I think everyone's heart was in the right place. Councillor Mill and Burley were on that committee. And it was really just trying to get a county road to be a county road. Now, the rationalization was just maybe so severe that it just, it kind of hurt the entire process. But really, there are some county roads that remain county roads that probably don't have the volumes that they should to be county roads. And as far as the urbans, our priority now is, is to treat these urbans as best we can. So that's kind of what I'm addressing today on whether we should hang on to the urbans that we have as the county, or whether they should maybe be controlled by the member municipality. So that's just the thought that number three, to just get the right roads at the right level. And I think, I think we've all learned something. When you look at recolor gray, for example, the amount of consultation with other committees, councils, the public, it really went quite a bit beyond what we did for the master plan. If we were ever to do a transportation master plan update or do it again, I think to be a lot more on the consultation front than we did back in the day. So we're specifically discussing out of the master plan, the connecting link. So what is a connecting link? Basically, it's, it's where a county road would run through an urban area and either connect up at both ends, or it's an extension of a county road that runs into an urban, such as Gray Road One would be Owen Sound. We were directed in July 15 to develop a connecting like principle and funding criteria and an agreement template. We had started to do that as we got looking at, at the options available to us. The connecting link is kind of that MTO model. It's, it'll be our option two here today. But we kind of realized there was more than just a connecting link in play, that there was really multiple options. And we thought it would be wise to come back to committee and see what other options are available. So option one is just a status quo with policy improvement. So this is basically what the county does now. We own the right of way, responsible for the road and the storm sewer. The member municipality would own the sanitary and the water main underneath. We have policies on setbacks, parking and speed entrance permits. And the municipality is responsible for sanitary sewer, water main, and sidewalks. One thing I did want to say was that even when I started at the county, there was quite a bit of jostling with the member municipalities. Nobody really had a great five or 10-year plan then. So all of a sudden, we'd find out that one of the member municipalities was doing a water main replacement, and they needed us to replace the road. And they had to pay for it and get it done, or, or we had to do it maybe earlier than we wanted to. I think that has come a long way. Everybody has a pretty good capital plan now. When we talk to the member municipalities, they have a pretty good idea, their five-year plan, maybe even the 10-year plan. We can move a road pretty easily, one year, two years, and they seem to be the same. So I think we've really done a lot better on, on just coordinating. So it's not as big a concern as it used to be. I know we used to, even when I started, there was a lot of angst about us trying to coordinate with, with the lower tiers. But it just seems, it doesn't seem as much of a headache for us now as it used to be. So the advantages to me are, it's already in place. We, we control those roads now. We, we seem to be getting the projects done. I don't think we're delaying the lower tiers from doing their jobs. They have water main and sanitary jobs that need to go, and we've been able to squeeze those in. So it's some good consultation. We're also right in the process. So we sit down and although typically they would hire a consultant to do the job, because it seems to be with those urban jobs, it's the water main and sanitary that's kind of the headache. Our road and storm sewer is, you know, it's on top, and it's, so it has to be done. But it's, it's simpler than, than the, the underground. So it's really, it's not a huge change for us to keep doing what we're doing. And, but the other thing is, we haven't really established urban policies. And, and you, and the committee has seen this, where, you know, we have a setback policy, we have maybe an entrance policy that really isn't appropriate for an urban area. And every urban road isn't the same either. I mean, there's, you know, there's a big difference between our urban roads, just based on what their function is. The disadvantages of us just keeping doing what we're doing is that there is just those multiple parties dealing with the same road, which is, is sort of, you know, it just makes for a little additional work. There's different goals for the county versus the member municipality. Sometimes we're, you know, kind of the mini MTO of really trying hard to protect that corridor. Whereas, you know, the, the member municipality might be more interested in, in some development that someone wants to do in the area. And then we might have a longer timeline, too. We might be looking 20 years out, maybe the, the lower tier isn't quite looking as far. They're, they're in a, in a bind right now, or they have a developer ready to go right now that would impact our roads. Public confusion is pretty widespread. When you try to explain to somebody, you own the road and the storm sewer, and someone else owns the water main and sanitary, it's just naturally confusing. You can't even, when they ask you who owns the road, it's hard to even say what the answer is. And, and out of that comes liability. You know, both parties will get named in any, any suit, because we're both in the, in the right of way. So the county can't excuse itself from liability, even if we're not really in there much. Priority changes, of course, is always an issue. It is even if, if we were just doing it ourselves. But if we have a big job scheduled for one year, and for whatever reason, the water main job can't go, then ours doesn't go. So then it just kind of throws a little kibosh in your plans. And stormwater is a big one for us, because especially with the new asset management push, as we talked about today, the, the government, you know, the province really wants to know about these stormwater systems. The problem with the systems are, is The, the government, you know, the province really wants to know about these stormwater systems. The problem with the systems are, is usually our, our stormwater system is a little bit of a big system. So there's usually a smaller residential neighborhood, a subdivision or something. The water comes down to our road. We have our storm system and then the outlet is usually controlled by the member municipality as well. So we don't have control of the outlet and we don't have control of the water that's being put into it. So it's really hard to manage a stormwater system when you just own the middle piece. So that continues to be a problem. So if we were gonna stay with the status quo, which, as I said, it, it sounds concerning to us as it was when the master plan started. We'd really have to work on these urban policies, which I actually think is fairly short work. You know, you're looking at maybe less than a year to get those developed. And more delegation of duties and maybe responsibility to the member municipalities. So we've sort of done that with the speed limits. We've left some of that up to the, to the member urbans. Parking bylaws, we still have our parking bylaw. Do we need to? Could, could the member municipalities decide what the parking is gonna be? Because usually parking comes down to downtown business. It's, you know, the upper tier wants to remove parking, the downtown businesses don't want to remove any parking, which is totally understandable. And then just some of our other policy setbacks and entrances, some of our signage policies are a little restrictive for an urban. Some of the vehicle restrictions and, and traffic calming and those types of things. Should they be installed by someone other than us, like possibly? And then utilities, you know, we, we try to keep utilities back away because we're so, so busy protecting those corridors. So this, so is there any, any more questions necessarily about what we do now, or is that, should I keep, I'll keep going here? I don't see any. Hands up. So the next option is, is the connecting link, the, the true MTO style connecting link. So the ownership and jurisdiction going to the member municipalities in the urban built up areas. The county would assist by funding somehow and ongoing funding, same as MTO does. And the cost split of the road construction maintenance, they didn't really talk about in the master plan that much, but it would be something we'd have to establish. In the master plan, it does mention, you know, MTO agreements, sometimes it's up to 70% or 90% somewhere in there funded by the MTO. I guess the advantages of that are a, a more control for the member municipalities of their urbans. They'd be more responsible for coordinating their underground service and road payment work together. And they would get an ongoing funding of some sort. Our disadvantages is just the fact that there's a little less control by the county. Now, maybe that's an advantage to the lower tiers, disadvantage to us. It's hard to say. If, if that would even be an issue, really. There is county policies in place, though, that, that we couldn't enforce if we didn't control the road. Even something like agri-transportation, if, if a member municipality decided that it was just not physically or, or feasible for money. You know, we can't enforce that on them. So some of those, some of those big picture plans that planning comes up with in the OP, we can't enforce anymore. The other thing that I just, we've noticed is those high end treatments, it's, it's like when there's a grant, when someone pays 90%. You probably do more than you would have done. If you just had an ongoing, ongoing funding, even with us, for instance, we, we always do a, a little nicer version of a, of a project we get a grant for than we do with our yearly gas tax. We're really scrimping and saving on the yearly gas tax, but if, if the federal government's gonna give you three million to do a road project, you're gonna make sure you spend it all. And, and just the fact that those connecting link submissions. MTO has a lot of people to look over things, to make notes on things, to write letters back on designs that you did that weren't right or whatever. The county doesn't really have that sort of manpower. We're, we, we consult with the lower tiers in, in our design projects and talk about pavement structure and maybe the paved shoulders and, and curb and that type of thing, but we're kind of in the system now. We just don't really want to become an approval agency where the member municipalities are writing up policies or, or packages, proposals to try to convince us that their job should be next on the list. One more issue is just infrastructure is underfunded, so. The funding is not gonna, the funding is never, as, you know, is said today, the funding is just never enough. So all of a sudden, it's just more underfunded assets for the member municipalities, which is difficult for everybody. Levels of service. A lot of ours are higher level of service, our roads, because they're higher traffic and typically higher speeds as well, but. Someone like Hanover, Gray Road Four and Gray Road 10, the Gray Bruce Line are a higher level than most of the other roads. Probably every other road in the town, so all of a sudden, there'd have to be something figured out on who's doing that maintenance. It might be a, a big struggle for them to do the maintenance on those bigger, heavier roads. Workforce numbers and union agreements, if road, you know, all of a sudden we have 50 less kilometers to take care of, is it gonna affect our union agreement? It probably will. And then just bridges. I, I don't really address bridges in here. I, this, this presentation is kind of leading to a workshop and I think bridges will be definitely discussed there. So again, there's a required work of the connecting link. We'd have to figure out some sort of funding formula, where we're getting the money from, how much it's hurting our other roads to fund urbans. Any sort of agreement and that type of thing. So there's some work and just the transfer, the connecting list, all that stuff. So there's a bunch of work to do there. And the third was sort of the full transfer, which we'd just be downloading those roads. I think, you know, one thing we all learned in the master plan is it's just too arduous to download a whole bunch of structures without any money. It's probably not fair. Unless you were downloading one that was in great condition, but even if it was, ideally, as is again said today, if it's, you know, for every hundred dollars you've got to do in 20 years, you need to be putting a dollar away now. So even if it's brand new, it's still costing you something. And the one thing we might just do is maintain the signing. And then whether there's a future fiscal or not. It'd be nice to get away from it somehow. I don't know if that would be an ongoing funding, like a pseudo gas tax from us or something. I'm not sure that, that'll be a, an issue we have to discuss. And you'll notice it's today, there's a lot of questions here, way more questions than answers, but we're trying to, uh, this is kind of where we're going here today to try to figure out how to advance this further. So our advantages of full transfer, as I said. You know, we're hands off. It's back to the member municipalities and they're in control of their roads and their urbans. They get some funding. It, it probably is a better, better place to have each road. We are really about moving goods and people. The municipalities really manage the road system to service the needs of the public and businesses, which is not necessarily. I mean, obviously, we, we take that on, but it's just, it's, it's conflicting interest sometimes with us. And if we were out of them, then the, the towns and settlement areas could be what they're really for, is for the people. And again, the storm sewer system, I guess the advantage would be, it'd be back to the, the memory municipalities. You'd be in charge of your entire storm system. Again, costs money too, so it's all about the money usually. Disadvantages, it's time consuming. I don't know how exactly we'd all reach an agreement. Maybe some people want it, maybe some people don't. One thing that we have noticed is that the majority of councils and especially the majority of public workspeople have changed since our original consultation. So we don't know where everybody stands now. Maybe everyone loves, loves that the county has the urban roads and thinks it's great, and maybe some people don't, I don't know. We need to evaluate all the roads if we're gonna download them and figure out the ongoing payment and who gets paid for what upfront. Workforce union agreements, again, maintenance and levels of service. It would obviously impact our levels of service and, and the lower tiers as well. And just the no control over future road continuity, which, I mean, that, that's kind of a doomsday scenario, I guess. Somebody takes over a county road and makes it one way in the opposite direction, our entire system continuity is compromised. Would that really happen? You know, unlikely, but it could happen just a little, you know, the death by a thousand cuts thing, just a little bit at a time. Our road becomes harder and harder to be part of a system. And just a lot of legal and legal survey work. You know, Lacy at the county is constantly discovering small road issues from previous transfers and amalgamations that come up. And it'd be a lot, those are gonna keep happening. And we don't want to download any previously unresolved issue on, on the lower tiers, of course. And just all our old files and drawings, obviously, we'd have to copy everything and, and give it to our, the new owner. And of course, bridges, again. Nobody's lining up to take over 50 bridges. You know, it's just, they're just so expensive and it doesn't seem like anybody can figure out how to make them more reasonable. And again, just a whole bunch of work here listed. If we were gonna transfer all these roads down, there, there's a lot of things to be done before we do that. Here's the list of the roads in question, so. The, the way the master plan worked was, there was a lot of transfers. So the connecting link list was quite short, because most of the roads were being transferred. So here's our list of, of, you know, where it's coming from, whether it was a transfer or a connecting link. That being said, Georgian Bluffs is not listed. The only road that was kind of left out of the, of the transfer was Gray Road Five near Waverly Heights and Creamery Hill. It is a very complicated road in that there's on sound water main there. It's our narrowest right of way. There's a lot of pedestrians there. But it's in Georgian Bluffs, so whether it gets, we'll have further consultation with Georgian Bluffs on whether it gets brought back into a connecting like agreement of some, or whatever we, connecting link transfer, or just keep doing the same thing as, as status quo and revisions, but. DC categories are listed as well, so. Category one is our major road project, so a lot of these roads, because there are, there, there's a lot of DC funding that goes along with them. I'll talk about that in a bit as well. There's the map of the potential connecting links. So it's in the report. Some of them have been added, like, I'll go back here for a sec. Gray Road 10, for example, Hanover, the Gray Bruce Line was not slated for a connecting link or a transfer in the master plan. It probably qualifies for, for that. So this was just a, a chart we created. If there was going to be a transfer, probably anything done in the last five years could immediately go. Of course, there's still that ongoing funding. Nothing would be needed immediately for the next bunch of years. Anything in the five year plan, we just keep doing, and then it would transfer at that point. And then anything beyond the 10 year, or, you know, five plus years would be that ongoing funding, but obviously there'd be some big rehab in year eight or whatever's on our 10 year plan. So we, we figure if we were gonna go to the full transfer, we'd have to get some sort of funding agreement for both, probably for an immediate payment, and if there's some ongoing funding. Something would have to be figured out that all parties could agree to. We're just kind of trying to be fair. It's, it's hard to know what fair is. Road maintenance, as I said, struggle in that people will be doing different maintenance that aren't used to. This was from the TNP, just about the bridges, so. Depending on what we transferred as far as connecting links to the bridges go, do the bridges all stay with the county? It always creates the problem in that we have, you know, we already have bridges, as you can see, former town line bridges and existing town line bridges that are on roads that we don't own, so we're not regularly patrolling them. Which isn't the greatest, but again, there's so many structures. Some municipalities have so many structures, you know, Hanover doesn't have any, but West Gray has tons and tons of bridges. So no one wants to take on anymore, obviously. And then these are just other things that are just wrinkles in any sort of transfer, traffic signals. You know, a lot, most of our traffic signals are in these connecting links, obviously, because they're urban. Our storm sewers, again, their storm sewer, you might not have now, but at least you have a whole system. But a lot of the storm sewers old too, so it, it's not like, you know, we'd be handing over the newest assets. County plans and permits, you know, permits previously granted by the county, what happens when they go to a new owner. Just policies, the official plan, are they still gonna be followed? And then just development charges. Some municipalities don't have development charges. We've been collecting development charges on a lot of these roads. So the other thing that hadn't been quite resolved yet is the road exchanges, so. On this map are some road exchanges from, four of them are from the master plan. A few of them are from the official plan. And some of them, the Gray Road 13, one up in Blue Mountain, in Thor, outside of Thornbury and Clarksburg, was basically brought to us by Blue Mountains that they would like to do a transfer with that, so. It's, it's, we just thought if we were going to a transfer and, and you had to somehow work out some money. Some of these roads we'd be taking on, like concession 12 and West Gray, if Gray Road Nine was moved, has a lot of needs. So we wouldn't take, we'd have a hard time taking it on without money. So whether that, you know, you'd, you'd even out the formula by tying in the transfers. So the next step, so. What we'd like to do is, this is such a big task. It impacts the member municipalities so much. We'd like to create a package for each member municipality and start talking about it. Meet with staff to discuss the option challenges, or maybe the staff doesn't have the issues, like I said before. And then we'd like a workshop. I, I know even during the cycling and trails. You know, you have a public works guy at one end saying, there shouldn't be any paved shoulders on our roads. And you have the mayor at the other end of the table saying they should be everywhere, so. Without staff and council together, it's, it's really hard to come to a consensus. And then obviously, start a recommendation and consult with the public. So the motion today, here's the recommendation, just to receive the report. This is, this is my overly optimistic, COVID was gonna be over before the summer of 2021. I, I apparently thought that two weeks ago. I don't know, anyway. But we'd like to prepare a workshop, but there's probably not much point in doing that without talking to all the member municipalities individually first. Getting our, just getting an idea where everyone stands, what our options are. And then having some sort of workshop, because I think, and it's hard not to do it in person. And I don't know when that's gonna be, of course, with the current situation, but. And, and just that staff will continue to work on financial assessments and potential action plans. We have a big spreadsheet that we've been trying, trying to put together. You know, how much work is gonna happen on each road, even stuff beyond the 10 year plan. Just trying to kind of get some numbers, because we know at some point this is gonna come down to thinking about money and crunching numbers. I'll stop sharing my screen here.
Thank you very much, Pat. I wonder if the screen could come up again, so I can see everyone.
Let me turn it on and share this.
There we go. Thank you very much. And Pat, you started off by apologizing for not having a fancy animated video, but I remember a few years ago when you were proposing the purchase of some trucks. There was a pretty fancy video that you presented that got us all excited and wanting to buy.
Yes, unfortunately, I'm, I'm incapable of actually making one myself.
Well, that's the whole trick, just get someone else to do it. Okay, we've got questions. Councillor Robinson, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I certainly remembered that video. I was dealing with a tandem truck, so that was rather impressive. Just a couple of things. Pat, I was wondering with regard to your report, most detailed, by the way. The table one, which just identifies the roads, kilometers, et cetera. And then further down on the report, there's a, there's a chart that speaks to timing of the transfers, you know, in terms of years. Is there a way to merge those together so that we can actually see the data in terms of the the roadways that you're suggesting as connecting lengths or transfers and when those would, would potentially occur? So that's just one of the items. Also, is there opportunity now, or should it be included in the motion that talks about lower tier, consideration of lower tiers transferring roadways to the county? Does that just happen through the workshops, or if it's not included in the motion, is that off the table? And then thirdly, there's a paragraph under considerations for financial and staffing that talks about workload of staff would be, would be outside the workload potentially of, of the staffing available in the county org. So you'd have to go outside. Could you speak a little bit more on that, in terms of the number of staffing projected? Should this, should this be approved at this stage and also what the potential cost would be? Thank you.
Okay, through you, Mr. Warren. Yeah, I'll answer all those questions here. The first one about merging a, a chart, we could pretty easily do that. We have a bigger chart. It just, for a presentation, it was, it was too many columns on, on one page. But yeah, we have a pretty good, like, we know with all these sections, when they were constructed, if they're in the 10 year, or if they're not. We haven't quite finalized what they'd all cost yet, but yeah, we could send you a more detailed chart to give you more information. As far as the lower, lower tiers transferring up, yeah, I get, that's what, when I look at the old road rationalization process, I think 2006 was the last one we had done. That was basically the process then, was, was the lower tiers had sent a list of, of roads that they thought should maybe come to the county. There was a criteria. There was a criteria, similar to the criteria that that were addressed during the master plan. And then they were all evaluated and some were uploaded and and that's so kind of the way, now that the easy thing back then, or seemingly easy, was they were uploaded with no money, which really wasn't a great deal for the county, like, we poured a heck of a lot of money into one nineteen that we took for nothing. And and it's, it, it's hard to imagine that we did that in a way. I don't know. I guess that was, that was the way it went back then, but it'd be very hard to do now. But there's definitely, there's some roads, well, actually, there is some in the road exchanges, like concession five and six, so of minute corners. There's a lot of thought that it should be a county road rather than one seventy, for example. So yeah, that would be something that we could bring out of our consultation with staff and the counselors. If you're doing some sort of road rationalization, you might as well do it all. You'd hate to, all of a sudden, two years, it's outdated anyway. And and the third question, just about staffing outside, I think, that's really why this has taken so long. We're all pretty busy with our jobs. We're trying to get all our construction jobs out, our tenders are out every year. And these these big projects, looking at your entire road system that has taken, you know, a hundred years to establish, it's really, it's so complicated, it's hard to really just address. I think this is, our biggest struggle here has been on on process, on how to get a road system to where it needs to be, because the master plan didn't really come out with those answers definitively. So whether we need to to get a consultant to help us, again, it's just one of those things where it's difficult in that it comes down to money, and a consultant can make all the recommendations, as they did in the master plan, you know, in that case, it was downloading two hundred plus kilometers. But if you're not dealing with the money, you can pick, make all the recommendations you want, so I think we would need outside help. Otherwise, it's going to be continually slow processes, as it has been. So hopefully, that answers your question.
Good. Thank you, Councilman Salaver. You're next.
Yes, and thank you, Pat, for this report. I have a couple of questions. One, we we keep referring to the transportation master plan. Has that ever been approved and for adoption by council?
Through you, Mr. Warden, yes, it was, it was finalized, but there was ongoing recommendations to come out of that, which are those other, this is one of them. And then, and then a lot of the recommendations have since been addressed through the official plan, but not all of them. I don't know if Randy Schirter has a better answer than me on that.
Yeah, just further to add to that, I guess, Pat's answered, I believe, the question correctly. It's the the transportation master plan was received at that time by by council. There was a number of recommendations and actions that council directed staff at that time to move forward with. One wasn't the road rationalization, as as Pat indicated, as based on, as it was proposed or recommended in the transportation master plan. But there were a number of things outside of road rationalization that council supported. And as Pat indicated, has been implemented through the new county official plan, as well as moving forward with with Pat and his team as 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 like this report that's that Pat's bringing forward today.
Thank you. Follow up, Mr. Warden.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, and so, you know, the the transportation master plan is now six years old, and of course, transportation patterns have changed hugely. And so now we're still looking at implementing some of the recommendations. Would it not be wiser, it's like making minor repairs on your house with the, knowing what the foundation is like? Would it, would it not be advisable to actually, you know, update the master transportation plan? So we have a clear vision of what transportation needs will look like in the next twenty years, knowing what we do today. It's quite different than what we knew in 2015. And then look at these, you know, issues of how we achieve the the transportation network that we want for the next twenty or thirty years.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that. I, you know, we've talked about that here internally. We just sat through this week's Simco's update on their master plan. Now, their original had more more actual decisions than ours did. But yeah, it probably is time. I mean, things have changed. I, we do sort of, I kind of feel that way too, that by the time I work through this, it's going to be another three years, and then you're ten years away from your original master plan. And and maybe it is time to go back out, and we don't have anything in the budget, obviously, this year for it. We hadn't talked that much about it, but maybe it is time to go out. I don't know if Kim's got something to say on that.
Kim, go ahead.
Thank you. I think my thought would be that by virtue of Pat and his team providing each of the member municipalities the information that we have right now and sitting down with them to discuss the situation, the issues, the opportunities, the challenges as they see them, and then bringing that information all back to council, I think would really inform everybody's decision making. I mean, if there's some, if it comes out that there's some really solid alignment around some policy changes and some and some actions that people generally feel are good things to do, would be beneficial to everyone. I don't see why we couldn't pursue those. If that's not what we come out of those discussions with, it turns that there's, you know, we're pretty far apart, or we just don't have a good path forward, then we'll need to take an alternate, an alternate tack from there. But we're just feeling like this has been really sitting, it comes up periodically through council so that, you know, before the end of this mandate, we wanted to be able to go and just check in with everybody and have the conversation.
Thank you, Counselor Desai. You're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. My my question was answered for the most part there. One of my concerns was whether or not there was any any input received from lower tiers, but my increasingly, I'm feeling that this is a a prologue, if you will, to to get more input from lower tiers. The other question that I had as well is and I guess it's, the CAO has already answered it as to why we're revisiting this. And I guess it's a good exercise. The last time we did it was was certainly a while ago, so it's maybe there are efficiencies that are there present, maybe there are, in fact, views that have changed. There has been a lot of turnover on staff and council, so I I'm looking forward to it, and and thank you for the report, Pat. I I mentioned at Grey Highlands Council yesterday that in Grey Highlands Transportation Department is the best department. And and even even though you don't have good animated videos, Pat, you had that great video the one time, and and that that makes you the best department.
Okay. I see no other hand, so maybe it's time to call the question on the motion to receive and then to proceed with the workshop. Pretty ambitious timeline there on the workshop. Maybe you can read that line to say that you'll prepare for the workshop by the summer. Anyhow, anyone opposed to the motion before us? Seeing none, that is carried. Thank you very much, Pat.
Mr. Warden, I will just let you know that Counselor Millen has left the meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. So he and Counselor Desai won't argue anymore. It's a good thing. All right.
I'll reject, Mr. Warden.
I knew. All right, we're on to item six E, and we're dealing with the Association of Municipalities of Ontario and the Ontario Federation of Indigenous Friendship Centers and their declaration, excuse me, of mutual commitment and friendship. We have Barb Fady on deck. This item is moved by Counselor Hutchison. And seconded, oh, we do not have Counselor Millen, so I do need a second, please. Deputy Warden McQueen. Thank you very much. Barb, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just checking for sound. Can you hear me well enough?
I can hear you perfectly, yes.
Great, thank you. So, good afternoon. This report is with regard to work that follows the the AMO virtual conference from last August. So at that conference, the, there was a memorandum of understanding signed that brought both the Ontario Federation of Indigenous Friendship Centers, as well as the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, together to help strengthen the relationships between Ontario's indigenous and non-indigenous communities. It's very significant, because we know that there are eighty-five percent of indigenous people live off reserve and in urban settings throughout the province of Ontario. So the information is contained in the report, but I do want to acknowledge that there are twenty-nine member friendship centers throughout the province, and Mowickwiddong here in Owen Sound serves both Bruce and Gray counties. We have worked closely with our Mowickwiddong partners for a number of years in a number of capacities, certainly in social services for children's programming, certainly for some of the poverty work that we're doing through the Poverty Task Force, as well as the community safety and wellbeing. I know Anne Marie's team works through some housing and homelessness pieces as well, and I think Randy and Planning. So that's just to name a few, and we're very fortunate to have strong leadership there and great partners. We wanted to mention that we had some recent advocacy over the past couple of years where funds were offered to enhance the former premises of our friendship center, and when we really rolled up our sleeves, determined that we would just be putting that money into something that still wasn't going to meet their needs. So some advocacy on behalf of senior leadership here at Gray County, through to Ministry of Education, permitted the transfer of those funds and enabled the dollars to be put forward into the new site. And hopefully, when COVID lifts, we'll be able to have an opportunity to visit. And we've had an invitation from Mowickwiddong to bring council to their new site. And perhaps we can share in ceremony through the planting of a tree or some opportunity to celebrate this joint declaration and the continued efforts to move forward. I want to just apologize for the delay in bringing this forward. I had worked hard over the fall and even over after the Christmas break to speak to my colleagues at AMO and the Ontario Federation of Friendship Centers. And then certainly the local colleagues, but COVID causes us to pause and pivot so many times. So here we are in April, finally bringing this forward. But it doesn't, it certainly, I want to ensure that it doesn't inhibit the work that we're intending to do and the intentions of going forward with obviously some strengthening of relationships and purposefully working towards our goals to to ensure that we have the strength and and the ability to continue to meet the needs of our indigenous population.
Thank you very much, Barb. Counselor, are there any questions of Barb? I see none, so it's a good time maybe to call the question. Thank you very much for this, Barb, by the way. Is there anyone opposed to the motion before us? Seeing none, I'm going to say that is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam CAO, I wonder if you might give us a sense of how long you believe we might, you know, just a sense of whether you feel it would be, you know, half hour or longer in closed session?
Five or ten minutes.
Excellent. Okay, then we'll, we'll go there. We won't bother to take a break and we'll try to finish. Okay, so we are now going to, we have a motion to move into closed session. Moved by Counselor Keegney and seconded by Counselor Carlton. And we're going to deal with personal matters of an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees pursuant to section two thirty-nine two of the Municipal Act regarding appointment of a treasurer. Is there anyone opposed to that motion? Then I'm going to say that that is carried. We'll take a second.